May 13th, 2025. And let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Linscock.
Here.
Commissioner Scharf.
Here.
Vice Chair Casalschron.
Present.
Chair Rao.
Here.
All here.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 2020, 22nd, 2025 minutes. If you may take a minute to look at the minutes and then, if I may have a motion, please. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law prohibits the Commission from making any decisions with respect to matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any oral comment speakers?
I see no speaker cards in person and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And seeing no items on the consent calendar, the next item on the agenda is the study session for multifamily and residential mixed-use objective design standards. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair. We actually have with us here Greg Goodfellow from Placeworks, our consultant who is working on this project, who will have a presentation for you tonight. And with no further ado, I will introduce Greg, who's right here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the entire Commission for having me. Thank you, staff. So as was mentioned, am I seeing a connection to my presentation on the board? I'm not seeing it here. I want to make sure everybody can see it. Oh, here we go. Are you seeing it on your screens? I'm sorry, we had a connection earlier.
I thought we did, and then it vanished again.
Oh, here we go. All right. As staff mentioned, we're here for a planning commission study session about multifamily and mixed-use objective design standards. A quick overview of my agenda. We'll do a quick project welcome. I'll do sort of a 10,000-foot background into the ODS process and what they are. I'm going to give a quick overview on Cupertino's design priorities, looking into past design guidelines and documents. I'll explain how ODS are developed, and then I'll go over some community insights we solicited during our community meeting. And finally, there'll be a planning commission discussion based on some questions that we put together. But of course, you're welcome to ask questions at that point and offer insights on any topics. All right. First of all, I've been working closely with Luke and Pew, who you know well. Again, my name is Greg Goodfellow with Placeworks. I'm working with Charlie Knox, also at Placeworks. I think you know our name from many projects here in Cupertino. Thanks again for having me. All right. In short, this city is in the processing of developing objective design standards. I'll use the acronym ODS from here on out for all types of multifamily and residential mixed-use development projects. I'm hoping to achieve three things tonight. I want to explain what ODS are and why the city is working to develop them. I'll illustrate potential approaches to ODS, as well as existing objective design standards that we at Placeworks had developed throughout the state. I really want to show the Commission the diversity in these standards. And finally, like I said, we'll solicit Commissioner feedback on overall design priorities for the city and different approaches to the ODS process, of which there are many. All right, some background on objective design standards. Really moving up to a high view, I think we're all aware now that there's an insufficient supply of housing in the state of California. Some quick statistics. About 80,000 units have been built in the last decade versus the 180,000 a year that are needed. There's higher rates of unaffordability. We're at the lowest ownership rate since 1940. About 1.5 households in California, 1.5 million households, excuse me, devote 50% of their income to rent. That's considered severely rent burdened. California has 22% of the national homeless population, and the major challenges to housing in the state are material, labor, and state and local regulations. Now, a result to that statewide crisis has been a statewide legislative response, and this really goes back to about 2017 with Jerry Brown. And there are two major themes to all of the statewide legislation in response to the housing crisis. First theme is that California needs multifamily housing. Single-family housing just won't cut it in terms of producing the number of units needed. And a second theme is that discretionary review constrains housing production in terms of delays. And in response to this, there's really a common provision that is spread throughout much of the housing laws that have been passed, and that is that subjective criteria can't be used to deny multifamily development for streamlining and fast-tracking. And of course, that's related to those themes. The state wants to get multifamily development built, and it wants to avoid delays based on subjective criteria and the associated discretionary review that goes with it. I brought up one of the major legislations associated with this. That's SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act, in order to really give you some insight into where design fits into this. And a direct quote from that legislation, "Cities can't disapprove a multifamily housing project, including through design review unless the project is shown to be inconsistent with, quote, 'objective quantifiable standards.'" And I'll get more into what this means and other laws that call out these, quote, "objective quantifiable standards." Again, the statewide response to the housing crisis. Multiple laws have been passed since 2017 with SB 35, that top law on this list, that's streamlined ministerial approval that goes straight to the heart of the matter, which calls out the need for objective standards to be used to deny any fast-tracked housing. Since that time, we've got SB 330, SB 167, SB 6, SB 9, AB 2011. These are just a few of the laws that have been passed that cite the need for objective standards to be used as the criteria for fast-tracking housing. I point out 167 here because this really hits home, this idea of objective standards, and this lean towards approving fast-tracked housing rather than denying them. That law states that a project must be considered consistent with objective design standards as long as, quote, "there is substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to conclude it is." In other words, the state is leaning very heavily towards approving project as opposed to denying them, even in the case of objective standards where presumably there is no right and wrong. Even in this case, there is this evidence leaning towards approval rather than denial. All right. So where does this leave us? It leaves us with the need to adopt objective design standards in order to preserve local design control. And this is somewhat ironic because we think of design control as really being in the hands of traditional design guidelines that are subjective, they are descriptive, they are very detailed. But unfortunately, those guidelines no longer have this approval authority in these fast-track multifamily housing projects that we're seeing so many of them and that the state has really deemed so vital throughout all these laws. So what is this official legal definition of an objective design standard? These are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and that are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion. That is a very wordy way of saying, saying, "These are quantifiable standards," much like a traditional zoning standard or development standard. Now, there are ways to shape ODS that are not just a number. They can be measurements, they can be definable requirements. Rates are common, true false statements, scores based on a selection of required elements, numeric ranges and percentages, or required quantifiable options. There are ways to shape objective design standards that aren't simply, "You need to be this high or this wide." And I'll give you many examples of adopted guidelines throughout the Bay Area and the state that Placeworks has worked on that really demonstrate this diversity. But again, the irony in these new laws is that what we think of as offering this local control, these subjective guidelines, simply cannot be used. And the way to regain this control is to adopt these objective design standards. A quick idea of what the difference is here. I don't need, I'm not going to cite all of these, but if you look at that red language in the first column, that is sort of typical subjective language. And in the green in the other column is a way of turning that subjective language into an objective, quantifiable standard. So you know, a phrase like "sensitive to the neighborhood," well, what exactly does that mean? One reviewer could see a project as being sensitive where another reviewer does not see a project as being sensitive. That's where we get into this issue of discretionary review, and that is the type of review that the state does not allow in its eligibility for fast-tracking. Shoulds need to turn into shalls. Ample with, well, what does that mean? Nope, that should, let's change that to shall be at least eight feet. So it's really this transformation of shoulds to shalls and apparent to actual numbers and things like that. But again, there are many ways to achieve this. All right. So let's make sure that everybody here understands the applicable development for ODS. What does this, what do these standards apply to? It's very broad. Basically, it's all multifamily residential projects, and that's any project with two or more units of any type. This includes the townhomes that are so popular in Cupertino and throughout the Bay Area, and it also includes all residential mixed-use projects where at least 30% of the square footage is devoted to residential units. Of course, those are the common three-to-four-story mixed-use projects with retail on the bottom floor that we see so many of in the Bay Area. What are not subject to objective design standards are all single-family homes. Non-infill sites, there are some specific requirements for infill. One of the main ones being that a site that is less than 75%, less than 75% of the perimeter is developed is included a non-infill site. Any hazardous sites, sites that would impact natural resources, wetland sites, sites that would impact historic resources. These really go back to those requirements we see in CEQA so much. So typically, those sites, types of sites are not subject to ODS because, of course, they will get such a rigorous review in the environmental review process and in other zoning development and standards, et cetera. A quick differentiation between zoning standards and objective design standards. Zoning standards, as I think most people here understand, regulate all types of uses, commercial, industrial, et cetera. They regulate development basics, such as building heights, setbacks, lot sizes, that are so familiar to us in development standards. And the intent of zoning, going all the way back 100 years, is safe, consistent, and context-sensitive built environment. It is not to streamline projects in any way, shape, or form. Whereas ODS are limited to housing projects, those types of applicable projects I just described, they regulate design and aesthetics, and the stated goal is streamlined review. And in light of that, existing zoning standards for those applicable projects still apply. And a key part of this is that objective design standards do not repeat or conflict with zoning standards. We don't want these confusing overlaps, and we don't want applicants to run across zoning standards that are in conflict with objective design standards. All right. I want to share, and this was my staff report, some design priorities that I highlighted in a very extensive review of past planning documents and design documents in Cupertino because I think we can glean some direction for the city. First of all, the general plan has a lot of focus on enhancing streetscapes in its multifamily residential projects. It's very focused on diverse architecture and articulation of buildings, active frontages that invite pedestrian and pedestrian environments, linking these different elements of the urban environment, blocks, boulevards, and nodes. And one that comes up quite a bit is reducing visual impact of parking, which is very tied to enhancing streetscapes and friendly pedestrian environments. These are just a few. Looking closer into the city's specific plans, you find some repeated, some also different design priorities. Screening unsightly building features, that could be anything from transformers in the front of the building to waste enclosures. I'll get into both of those later. Allowing for special architectural features. This again speaks to this desire for a diverse architectural environment. Livable, common, and private open spaces, whether it's shared open spaces in large apartment buildings or private balconies. Promoting variety in building facades. Again, this goes back to articulation and a desire for variety in exterior, excuse me, exterior articulation. And something that's quite rare in Cupertino is that it really has a jumpstart in design in the city zoning code. There are a lot of standards, these are already objective, for different elements of design, including building stepbacks, not to be confused with setbacks. Stepbacks are these reductions in height for different building levels and stories. There are standards for visual privacy, standards for balconies and private open spaces, vehicle entryways, design standards dedicated just to townhomes, as well as building glass and lighting standards. All of these things are often in objective design standards and are often not in city zoning codes. So again, it'll be important to look for overlaps in objective design standards that come out of this, as well as ensuring that there are not conflicts between the zoning code and the objective design standards. All right. I'd like to introduce you to the process of developing ODS. My next slide is a little esoteric, but bear with me. This is something I've used in a lot of my presentations. But when we think about objective design standards, it's really a process, I mean, process of deciding how you want to balance design control with streamlining. And the way I've developed this slide is basically using geometry. And if you think of the shape of objective design standards, start with very simple, broad objective design standards. That's represented by this square. Perhaps each side is a standard. So there are very few decision points here, and the result is rapid streamlining. It is very easy for a staff member to go through that checklist, see that those standards are met, and it's easy for an applicant to follow those. On the other side, the city has less control of design detail. Now, there are cities who have argued, and I've been doing objective design standards for the last six years, there has been sort of a sea change where, of course, we would say, "Well, why would we do that? Why would we cede control for so many of these details that are important to us?" There's now been a sort of change towards, well, what that does is it puts control back in the architectural professionals and leads to that diversity that we so value. And an example of that is I just finished objective design standards for the entire unincorporated area of Contra Costa County. This is a huge county, as you know, with very diverse unincorporated areas, everything from, you know, waterfront historic homes in Rodeo to the Pleasant Hill Bart Station, which has a very transit-oriented, you know, diverse, or excuse me, dense, taller building, sort of mixed-use buildings. How can you possibly create design standards that fit both those two very diverse types of housing? And the way the county decided to do that was to pull back, excuse me, and do a broader take. Instead of trying to cover all those elements of design for what could be a duplex in waterfront Rodeo or a six-story multifamily building near the Pleasant Hill Bart Station, let's just find those common areas of design that we want to prioritize and stick at that broader level. Now, as you move further and further down this level of detail, and I've ended this with a circle, which strangely, and as you know, really has no sides. There are infinite decision points, which of course, this is what the state does not allow to be used as criteria. That's where there's no streamlining, but there's the most local control. So I think it's important for you as a planning commission and the city as a whole to sort of brainstorm, where do we want our objective design standards to fall? How do we want to balance this process of facilitating streamlining but at the same time maintaining control while fitting within our prioritization of architectural diversity and things like that? So this is sort of the way I've shaped this idea of balance and moving from a broader level standards to all the way to subjective, which of course, is what we're moving away from. Now, I have a series of slides here that are actually adopted standards throughout the Bay Area and some in Southern California, all of which were created by Placeworks. And really, these are not trying to cover a certain type of topic, they're really just to show the level of diversity and approach. So here is for the city of Sunnyvale, where this was an interesting process, and this is the topic of site design. And as we put together many different standards for site design with associated graphics, they liked the idea for site design of these simple plan-level drawings as opposed to anything three-dimensional. What happened was we realized, you know what, this is a lot of text and a lot of associated graphics. The city decided, you know what we should do is condense all of this if we're really trying to make this readable, but at the same time maintain our graphics and create a table out of this where, you know, different columns are the different building types. We have multifamily residential and mixed-use commercial and residential. And embed those figure names into this table with N's. So imagine you're looking at these guidelines, these are two sides of the page. So again, this was an example of one city who decided they liked tabular guidelines, or excuse me, standards, associated with figures to illustrate them. And these were focused mostly on the overall layout of the site, building orientation, pedestrian access, frontages, parking location, what to do on corners, things like that. A very different take on site design was in Southern California, and this was a city that was really focused on site-wide aesthetics. They wanted design themes to be held throughout their different sites, unity in architectural styles, visual consistency, and things like roofs and facades. So their standards were much more photograph-based and illustrative. And this is just two ways of approaching the same type of topic of site design and site planning. So I wanted to sort of present these two as just one example of the diversity of approaches. Another example, here's the topic more of massing and articulation and roofline. This is an example of the common, what we call exonometric or 3D drawings that are more common in these massing guidelines. So these are required setbacks that depend on building height, use of setbacks, pitched roof standards, flat roof standards. So again, this city wanted to focus on breaks in buildings to break up that massing. And it's important to remember here that these don't result in the boxy development and buildings that you're seeing in these standards, or excuse me, in these illustrations because, again, these are all paired with the more detailed articulation standards, window-based standards, things like that. So again, we need to simplify the graphics that go along with a lot of standards, but they do not mean that the resulting product is going to necessarily look just like them because this is paired, of course, with so many other standards. An example of landscaping. Here's a city that had this interesting focus on what they called focal point landscaping. Instead of developing so many different quantifiable standards for different types of landscaping, they really wanted to focus on what they called focal points. So creating landscape standards near the entries of multi-use, or excuse me, multifamily developments around plazas or in plazas at the terminal points of pedestrian walkways, where you walk in, where you walk out. And they really liked this graphic approach of more landscape-style sketches. They also wanted to make sure that they regulated parking lot landscaping, so buffers next to residential units, plantings in those landscape islands or what they call fingers, those extensions that separate out parking spaces. Again, this was just a unique approach to landscaping into two different subtopics within landscaping. And again, I don't know any other cities at this point who really did focus it in that way, but there are so many different diverse ways of doing it, and that's why I'm bringing this one up now because I thought it was interesting. Something common that you'll see are regulating trash and service areas. Here's an example of a graphic we did for a city that really wanted to make sure that trash enclosures were finished using materials from the primary building, that they were, that any trash enclosures that were visible from the upper stories of adjacent structures had opaque covers, so neighboring residents weren't looking in at trash cans. Again, that's a standard I hadn't seen anywhere else, and it speaks to, you know, using your priorities and creating standards that you see fit. They also set a standard that storage areas shall not be closer than 20 feet from doors or operable windows of adjacent structures. That one's more common. That's actually quite typical throughout design standards. I've seen some ODS documents that separate out trash and services as their own entity. Others, they'll build, you know, more into the site plan as a subsection. Again, there are so many ways to do this. Here's an example from Daly City. They liked the idea of their standards being associated more with photographs of their neighborhoods. They didn't want to get too technical. And they, here's some standards for lighting. Lighting comes in sometimes as its own chapter, other times dropped in to separate sections for exterior standards. But they wanted to make sure that their lighting fixtures were oriented away from the street and they were fully shielded. You know, that comes up again. What does "fully shielded" mean? Well, that's where you add in, so that no light is emitted above a 90-degree angle. That's an attempt at moving this language even more towards objectivity. Entryway illuminations, the front porch landing and other recessed entryway lighting is consistent with the design materials and color of the structure. And then a separate standard for ground-mounted lighting, where, you know, we incorporated that threshold of three feet tall. So you know, this is really a process of prioritizing a topic, moving towards a statement of objectivity, and then maybe realizing, you know what, we've got to get a little closer. We need to, and this has come up a lot in the standard I just mentioned, which is, you know, developing these trash or service enclosures. All right, we've got to make sure that the materials complement the primary building. What does "complement" mean? Well, you know, you have to use kind of the same materials. Okay, how many of those materials? All right, let's establish the standard. You need to use one to three of the same exterior materials of the primary building. So it's working towards a standard that is easy to work with, but at the same time gets that priority across as close to that subjective priority that was originally there in so many cases. This is something that we've really pushed for in our documents, which is this, go back to that original intent of these laws, which is ensuring that design is ministerial. So in a lot of our documents, at the end of the document, we have what's called an ODS checklist. This is where that planning staff can go through and actually check that box mark. So these are the, you know, in yellow there are the topical sections, and in white are each of those standards abbreviated. And both the applicant, as she or he creates this project, can check that box mark. All right, we've got those exterior standards. Yes, it's three feet from the entrance. And then the planning staff reviewing this can really exemplify that ministerial process and also check those boxes. So it offers both sides a chance to make sure they've gone through and they're consistent with the standards, and they're saving that time that is so valuable to the state and is so exemplified in this legislation. So I've worked with staff to sort of suss out how we could develop this outline for Cupertino. And this is, you know, components of other similar cities I've worked with in the Bay Area, looking at those priorities that I gleaned from going through this exhaustive study of past documents. This is how we could see this. You know, most ODS start with this sort of grand purpose chapter to explain to users why this is here, what's the definition, you know, how this document is organized, and then again, of course, the administration and the review process, how these applications will go through the city staff. You know, we talked about the diversity of uses. We simply can't, unless, you know, as the county of Contra Costa did and made their ODS more like a zoning code, to really capture this diversity of uses, a duplex in a neighborhood versus a six-story mixed-use building on a major corridor. I found that it's usually best to separate out into two chapters. So you've got a chapter of standards for mixed-use and multifamily. These are sort of those block-scale projects, more than two stories, more than 10 units. Typical typologies are those vertical mixed-use buildings and residential buildings and townhomes. I see that as split, and each of these chapters would open with a guiding principles section. That is not an objective section. That is the city's chance to really demonstrate to the reader and to the developer and the applicant, "Look, these are objective standards, but this is what we're trying to achieve here. This is a way to lead the reader in to those standards and repeat what we really want to achieve here." So the guiding principles in this section would be high-quality design, of course, pedestrian orientation, coordination of the, within the project, site and surroundings. And then the major topics would be site design, and there are subtopics there, I won't read through each one, building form, pedestrian experience, and common open space and landscaping. And those subtopics you see there are prepared largely in what I found in reviewing. And those subtopics you see there are prepared largely in what I found in reviewing past documents. And then the other side of this document would really focus on small-scale residential. And those are typologies such as duplexes, triplexes, other multiplexes, courtyard-style apartments. And this is a whole different quote "house" scale of one- to-three-story buildings with no more than 10 units. And again, this would have their own approaches, some of the same topics, but different approaches and different standards, of course, to fit these different style buildings. Again, this is absolutely a draft proposal in sussing all these things out. All right, we did hold a community meeting here in this room in early February. You had the quantitative results in your staff report. And I just wanted to share some of the qualitative insights. We got some good written comments and post-it notes. I'm not going to go through every single board, that would take a little bit too long. But one of the major boards was for large projects, and the topic was connectivity. You can see that the first is just the JPG of the board itself. The second image there is a photo of the completed board. And we got a lot of comments on entrances and driveways. A quote that I thought was interesting was driveways with just garages do not create communities. Projects with four or more units must have at least one entrance driveway and a separate exit driveway. There was a lot of talk about, you know, crowding at driveways and making driveways less pedestrian-friendly if they're too large. There was also a lot of comments, you can see those post-it notes, on ground-floor design. Ground-floor glass can't be reflective due to glare. Ground-floor double heights is a waste of space. One of the topics was should those ground-floor retail spaces be double the height of the above residential units? You should define a number of entry points to projects per linear foot. Good design allows for maximum separation between the residential units. This was, I think, more of a density comment. Interesting comments about neighborhood context for smaller projects. Again, this goes back to these duplexes and other small projects. One person wrote that we need to prioritize these over simple exterior materials, the building step-ups, window locations, vent locations, those ugly HVAC units that are often in front of these smaller projects. Someone asked, are you considering resiliency, climate factors, and hazards? This was a very good question. And a lot of this, there are objective design standards that integrate resiliency and, let's say, drought-resistant landscaping into their landscape standards. But typically, larger issues of hazards and climate factors are not included, just given the amount of state law, or, you know, given the number of state laws that guide those things otherwise. But you can always integrate climate-related standards into different topics. I've seen cities, or we've worked with cities, who wanted to just do a whole section on bird-safe guidelines, which has everything from glare resistance to avoiding landscaping that funnels birds into a building. And so they've created actual angles of landscaping that open up to ensure that birds fly away from buildings rather than getting funneled towards them. That just, again, speaks to the level of diversity. All right, this is where I'm going to add some questions here. Before I do, why don't I stop and let any of you ask a question, if you have any? I'm happy to keep going as well.
I have a quick question. How many people completed the survey when you said the quantitative results?
I think there were 13 to 15 people here. Some people didn't answer every board. Other, you know, not everybody put a post-it note.
So that's the quantitative survey you're referring to?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so under 15, it sounds like?
Yeah.
Under 10?
No, not under 10.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And probably a good time to pause to let commissioners ask some questions, take it all in, and then you can continue. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
And how many more slides did you have, or was the next session?
It's just the remaining question slides.
Okay, okay, great. Anyone want to go first? Questions? I know Commissioner Lindstrum's gone already. Do you have more questions? We're going to just do some questions and then go back to the slides, just so we can... No questions? So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm maybe a little curious about where this fits in the timeline to, you know, objective standard proposal.
Is your question, when is this?
Yeah, I'm curious. I'm curious, but, you know, will we see this again?
It's a great question. I think the next time you'll probably see it again is the fall.
I think at the latest, yeah. Excuse me, my voice is cutting in and out. But the goal tonight was to try to get input on the front end before we had a draft to put in front of you, rather than having Greg show up with a draft document where there had really only been the February meeting. So the goal is, yes, to bring this back when you have an actual document that's hopefully addressing the themes or major topics that you want to see this focus on. And I think also a big question Greg has too is the degree of control you want to have too. These could be very broad, they could be very specific. So yes, you will definitely see it again. It will go to the city council after this as well. This has not been presented to the city council. So we're expecting to have at least one more planning commission look, and the council will look at it two times, at least.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul. So I'm curious, you know, just given the nature of the kind of input that we get, you know, usually, again, no offense to those that show up, but it is a small subset of our population, and we struggle to represent the needs of the vast majority of residents. So I'm curious, when you've done this across cities, how have you balanced that input? For example, have you spoken to or had the commission speak to developers that are actually able to give input on what sells and what the community likes and what do buyers like? So it's one thing to get community input from a small subsection that really may or may not be professionals in the space, but are you also getting input from professionals like the developers or from staff? What other sources of input do you factor in?
Well, in past projects, we've done what we call stakeholder input. And over the few years of doing this now, it's become less and less successful in terms of the type of input received and the type of participation. You know, before, there was more input on, more about feasibility level, how standards might make it more difficult for a developer to, you know, to finance a project and how it would impact a project. And I have decided in doing this that, given, and this is a whole nother issue, but given the number of exemptions, whether it's through density bonus or things like that, there's simply less interest on the part of developers and architects in participating in this. And the type of input is sort of the same each time. And that's why I am more interested in hearing from the commission. And, you know, keep in mind also that there'll be a public draft of this report available for 30 days for any of the, for the city to look at. I've done, you know, so many community meetings in different places, and, you know, community interest is, has not been high. You know, I'll be honest, it's an esoteric idea, I think, that's hard for people to latch onto. And again, that's why I really want to take that 10,000-foot view for you and everyone listening to this about what this is and why it's happening.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of double-click on that a little bit. If you look at the kind of interest that Cupertino's had, as you pointed out earlier, it's a lot of townhomes. And the townhome buyers are pretty selective on what they want and what sells and what people will buy. And so it would be actually of interest to hear from the townhome developers on what it is that would both hinder and foster creation of properties that sell for them and that people want to buy and move into the neighborhood. So I'd push back a little bit on that. I think that there's a difference between sort of high-density mixed-use, where the density drives a lot of the conversations, versus what is selling nowadays, where there is an appeal factor that goes with it. And we don't want to hinder that, obviously. So maybe through staff, we can look at other ways to really get input from a diverse set of stakeholders. And maybe it's offline input, but whatever we can do to hear from more than just a small subset of 10 or 15 people that give us input.
Yeah.
And that way, the commission can also weigh those factors in.
Yeah. No, and staff has been very clear that we need to have a separate section for townhomes, which is why we did, why we included that, you know, in that first chapter of the ODS.
And I'm sure the commission can provide input on what might be suiting the community versus what is perhaps leaning towards interests that are more about density or otherwise. So I think we can apply that filter, but getting the input is useful, so that we can hear all points of view.
Okay.
Sure.
Sorry, I had a couple more questions. One is, are we expected to vote today on this topic?
No, this is just a study session.
This is a study session, right?
Yeah.
And then the second thing was, are you looking for input? Like you showed multiple styles of developing ODS, right? With like the photos of the flat maps, diagrams, 3D, you know, whatever. Are you looking for guidance from us in terms of, you know, which style we would prefer?
Yeah, and that's why I showed you so many of the different ways. Any guidance?
Okay. And then the follow-up question is, how does this, you mentioned density bonus, right? How does this play with, if somebody, you know, if a developer does a density bonus request, like so, like how much, how much do the ODS standards apply in that case?
Unfortunately, they can waive them.
Exactly, okay. That was my question.
Yeah.
Is there anything at all that they cannot waive?
Uh...
I, you know, just want to make it clear.
Right, and that's the nature of the state legislation with housing right now. And, you know, that's an ongoing issue. There's not much they can't waive.
Okay.
Guess if I could just add to that is, the way I look at this now is, odds are not going to give you the authority or control you once had. But it gives you something that right now you lack entirely. Because discretionary standards don't have any teeth, don't carry any weight. So I think the hope is that the better you do with the odds, the more likely developers will not waive them. But of course, through density bonus, they're going to want to get the project they want. But it does give you some measure of control and some assurance.
Right, and that's kind of what I was leaning at in terms of stakeholder input, is their input is generally going to be whatever makes it easier, as opposed to what the city's, excuse me, what the city's priorities for design are. And, you know, that's why I want to put these decisions mostly in the commission, in the council, and the community's court.
Sorry, I had one final question.
Go ahead.
And this is to staff, right? So you said there would be one more planning commission review of this, and then it goes to council? So it would be great if we get more than one, so that we get a chance not just to, you know, review and approve and check it off and basically say yes or no, but to actually get maybe one more meeting in between where we get to have some input in the draft and then have it come back as a more finalized draft. So, you know, two meetings instead of one.
I am happy to do that. My only issue is always managing contracts. Other than that, I get it. This is kind of an abstract, new topic for a lot of people, including us. So I think it's sort of getting familiar with, you know, what do you want to get out of it in terms of, like you had asked, even the format of the document. So I could see where it would take multiple meetings. So I think we'll see what we can do. To Greg's point with talking to developers, I think that's something we could do fairly informally. We did that through the housing element. I will say the comments were fairly predictable, and there was not a huge rush to participate on behalf of developers. But I think it's something we could get their input, you know, outside of having a formal meeting like this.
Absolutely.
I just had a quick follow-up question. You mentioned waivers for density bonuses and other exemptions. Are there other exemptions that we should be aware of?
With objective design standards, I mean, there's just, there's the, I think Luke and Pew can speak better to this than I can. I mean, overall, and this is why I brought up SB 167 in this, the state is just pushing to make it easy, even with objective design standards, to push for the applicant's side. And, you know, the overall teeth for any form of housing standards, you know, those teeth are dulling more and more. And I think, density bonus is the big one. I mean, that's the one that people are using right now, because that is the one that, and the inclusionary housing ordinance in a lot of cities uses that as a tool to waive standards. That's often a, I'm not familiar, does Cupertino have an adopted IHO? So a lot of incentives in contemporary IHOs, and one of those incentives is a reduction or a streamlining of different standards and review. So I've seen more recently, you know, a waiving, a waiver of design standards as a part of IHOs. That's a common one now.
So I'm curious, it's been maybe three to four months since the community meeting and this meeting. What has transpired since then, and what is the bottleneck in making faster progress to either get more visibility or more frequent checkpoints or more community meetings? I mean, what, it seems like we're having these meetings a few months apart. Is that typical of your experience with other cities, or is the schedule comparable to other cities? And what drives that timeline?
Well, this was getting this, on this agenda, and, you know, I've been working with city staff to, you know, to move this at the pace it was moving forward. I mean, there hasn't been any major obstacles. And, you know, like was mentioned, after this, we'll go to the city council for another study session, not for any resolution or passing. I think this is organizing and getting meetings on agendas is, you know, the stretched-out point at the beginning. Once we can sit down and start developing the standards, things move faster, and then, you know, we'll get into the process of another set of meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to just make sure that getting on the agenda is not the bottleneck. We can always have as many special meetings as we need, if needed. So, you know, the agenda should not be the bottleneck. So I want to make sure this dies is not being a bottleneck in any way for progress. And if we can see this more often, to, I think, the point that was made earlier, I think that helps to get input at frequent checkpoints and hit to see this like twice, six months apart, and then it's done. So we'd love to hear from you through staff, what can be done to see this more often and iterate. You know, we have a saying in the tech industry, act now and iterate, or bias for action, depending on who you ask. But yeah, we'd love to see this more often. And so without much further ado, unless Commissioner Schorf has held his questions.
So I was looking at some ODS for other cities, and I wonder if the one for Cupertino, do you have open space requirements per unit?
Oh, well, those are in the code right now. That's an example of usually, that's not typically in an ODS, because it's usually a development standard, the amount of open space per the square footage of residential space. So that's an example of a very close call, whereas open space standards in an ODS may be pedestrian pathways with landscape buffers are required from each apartment building to that central open space. Or each open space needs two of the following amenities, you know, a barbecue area and a child's playground. So they're much more oriented to quality of life and design.
Okay. And again, unlimited waivers, so they can do whatever they want, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I would urge you to, with the value I see in the existing design standards as well as objective standards that come out of it, they are indicative of the city's priorities, and they're informational, and there are, I think, developers and architects have always looked at them, and they're used to looking at them. And it is, I don't, I urge you to not assume that's a reason to not focus on these.
Right, I mean, I mean, there are good developers and bad developers, and, you know. Hopefully, we get some of the good ones.
Okay, and on that note, maybe we should let you proceed and finish the rest of your session.
All right, these are the same questions that I placed on your staff report. And again, they're just for guidance. And on these next three slides with the questions, these are literally examples of housing in a mile radius of where we stand. And again, this is just my way of really hitting home the diversity right now in this city, and these are all projects that, of course, passed any form of design review in the past. So this first one goes back to this larger question of, you know, as a first thought, what do you see as more valuable standards that are briefer and focused on this broader perspective of these major priorities, or that really regulate design tightly? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I'm curious why you've kind of boxed the choice as being, if you're broad, you allow for diversity, whereas if you're detailed, you don't. You could have a detailed ODS that accounts for the diversity as well.
Well, because the broader, I mean, the point I'm making is that a broader, simpler set is more in line with the streamlining and housing production that the state is looking at. Whereas a more detailed set is, it hearkens back more towards... Whereas a more detailed set is, it, it hearkens back more towards a longer process for an applicant and for the reviewer at staff, and it leads to a set of products that are going to look much more like each other, because they've all followed everything down to the width of window framing and things like that. So it's, it's this question of a very detailed set of standards that leads to a very common set of products versus a broader set that leaves more room for flexibility in the final product and in the designer of that product.
And do we have any indication that this is a bottleneck for production of housing right now? It seems to me like financing seems to be the concern that I seem to run into most often.
Well, we don't have design standards right now, so it's hard to tell.
But in terms of even applying discretionary standards as very detailed and cumbersome processes, if you will, if that is the extreme, as you showed in your spectrum, does staff have input on whether they see this as an impediment?
I, no, I'm sorry. I, I, I think your comment that financing and other issues are by far the bigger impediment to housing getting developed, we're hearing that from everybody. I think where Greg's going to though is, and I guess an example I would have would be a place like Santa Barbara, where you would have very detailed standards that are dictating materials, mullions in the window, limited color palette, tile roofs, things like that, where you're getting into very tight, detailed design that while it's specific, it may tell you exactly what you can do, it doesn't allow a lot of leeway. I mean, you pretty much know down to a very small level versus having broader standards that may focus on, say, defining an entry, or having landscaping at key locations, but while it's clear, it's broader and allows for more flexibility, because I, I think where you're going with the detail, Greg, too, is that detail can lead to monotony, and it can lead to uniformity. My perspective on Cupertino is that's not the city you have right now. You do have a pretty diverse city, it mostly built later, you don't have a lot of historic buildings. Like at the city like Palo Alto, where you have a strong craftsman heritage, you have a lot of Icler developments, you have a lot of things where you might want to tie into those, depending on the location of a building, but again, this is a big topic, but I think where Greg's going is you have a lot of latitude. Do you want to have a broad process that focuses on quality but allows greater latitude in design versus something very specific, right?
And I didn't just drop this out of the blue, this goes back to my reading of the existing design guidelines, which really focuses on this diversity of uses and product, the diversity of facade articulation and things like that, which you will tend to lose with a very detailed set of standards.
Can you pick a couple of examples from our neighboring cities, say Saratoga, Los Altos, Sunnyvale, Milpitas? If you had to sort of look at what surrounds us, which direction have they gone?
Yeah, Sunnyvale is more towards that broader set of guidelines, where a certain design style is never mentioned, that, you know, the word Edwardian or craftsman is never there. There are not standards for something like mullions or, or fenestration width. Whereas in Marin, their set, for the county in Marin, their set of design standards is literally a 500-page form-based code down to each individual city, and, you know, representations of different craftsman styles and things like that. So that a whole idea of streamlining, if you're going to build there, is almost gone when you open up that 500-page document and you're trying to follow it. But what the city and county is going to get are these very defined styles of product. And that's not a bad thing, I'm not, that's not a judgment call by any means, but I do think each city needs to try to make this decision of where they want to go.
Chair, if I may also add to that, you know, the, the more complex, the lengthier this document gets or these standards get, it's just more, you know, for a developer to basically say, you know what, I just don't want to deal with this, and I would much rather waive every standard you have, or most of the standards you have. But if they were broader, and they were a little bit more general and allow for that diversity, they may be more inclined to actually try to meet us at least halfway, if not all the way.
So, I mean, it sounds like we know what the answer is, at least the answer you're guiding us towards, which I, I happen to agree with. I think we should have broader guidelines, but we should try and have some targeted details in some key areas.
Which leads to my next question, I, because I don't want you to think I'm guiding you.
Right, so, you know, it's like, I have a friend who lives in an HOA where they, you know, they tell you everything from the size of the windows to the material that has to be stucco, and they have a color palette of like five colors they can choose from to paint their walls, interior and exterior. I mean, it's, it's hugely restrictive, and, and it creates a very homogeneous neighborhood, which, you know, is a choice. I don't think we want that, so I think we want to allow some innovation, especially, you know, we're Cupertino, we're the home of innovation in the world, so we should be allowing for innovation, we should be allowing for creativity. So I do think we should try for a more balanced approach, and I know balance sounds like we want it all, right? But, but it is kind of like allowing for these broader guidelines, but then in areas where it really matters, get very targeted in some key areas and provide more specific guidelines there.
So really quickly, how many questions, and are you looking to get commission input at this point on these questions? Or you're?
Absolutely. I mean, this is, this is it, this is the last slide.
How many of these do you have?
This is it. I just, I just bumped ahead one slide so, so we can talk about purpose.
You have six questions. So we haven't taken public comment, and I want to maybe pause us for a second, so we hear from the public before we go further. Is it okay if we pause? So at this point, maybe we open it up for public comments, if you have any, Madam City Clerk.
We have one speaker card in person and no hands raised on Zoom. Our speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and everyone else here, and my regards to the Planning Commission and Placeworks. You always are presented with very, very interesting, different problems that you have to solve. Twenty years ago, we had a very, very heated discussion about Florida area ratio in these very chambers on a Tuesday. I went home that night and miscarried. You talk about the sacrifice that the public puts into caring about what their communities look like. I, I think that everything that Cupertino has currently in their design is good. It's all a part of us. We spent hours, the, the previous planning staff, planning staff that's been here, city council, they put their best and heart into it. Everything that is currently the design standards in Cupertino is of the people. I did not fully understand the difference between subjective and objective until about two months ago, a planner in San Jose was interviewed over San Jose adopting objective design standards, and he said, "The public's input is too subjective. It's not objective enough. We need to limit it." Now, I'm sure that planner is a wonderful person, I have no problems with him, and they happen to have spoken to one of the papers. I got it. They don't want to hear from the public. We are, we are problems. The, the public, local control is a problem. The powers that be that want us to go into objective design do not want to hear from us. This is all directed toward multifamily housing. Everything is. I, I hate to say that I have studied this problem way more. My, my brother in Portland, Oregon successfully protected his neighborhood from having the historic homes torn down. They paid a price. This is, it's, I, I'm, I'm upset because we're having to dump LOS because it's not objective enough. Why confuse everyone with VMT? It doesn't work. So the other thing is too, everything that has happened with these housing bills being dumped on us, we don't get any input. Now we have objective designs, which nobody understands, and I am rebelling. I have taken a step back, I understand it, and I say, no. The line, you do not cross it.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time. We have no other speaker cards in person, and we have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So maybe we can reconvene with Placeworks and let you continue with your questions. Since you only have six questions, let's try and limit our time, but do commissioners feel like we need to vote on these things, or any preferences on how we want to give input? No interest in voting?
No.
Okay. Yep. Okay, very good. So let's continue on.
Okay, so I, I advanced forward of these two, because we got to this point of, if we're going to create more, more of a broader ODS package, then let's make sure that we do hit on key priorities for different housing product types. That's what these two questions are. Again, these are two shots of a duplex and a more traditional or contemporary mixed-use, excuse me, multifamily project right here within a mile radius. Are there design components in these larger projects that you'd really like to prioritize and create standards for?
Are those two separate questions, or?
Well, that's the first one. Priorities for larger projects and priorities for smaller projects.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner, let me get it.
I was going to actually ask a different sort of question.
Go for it.
I'm, I'm curious, in the current, in the current general plan, the the city, the city is divided into areas, you know, kind of geographic areas, which have different characteristics. In your professional opinion, is that a keeper? In, in the, toward the ODS objective?
Now, this might be a frustrating aspect also of objective design standards, which is that they are based on product type entirely, not place. A lot of people get this confusion, very understandably, that they apply to certain zoning districts. No, they apply to the project, and with so many variation, you know, variances offered in land use and in districts, a, a multi-use product could be approved in a non-typical, you know, zoning district. The point is just that any project with more than two housing units cannot be disapproved, or its density reduced based on a subjective standard. And therefore, I'll stress once again, no one, no law requires a local jurisdiction to adopt ODS. It just says you can't use the opposite in your review. So it behooves every city with multifamily development activity to adopt ODS.
So, so to Commissioner Fung's point, and, and maybe playing off of some of the resident input earlier as well, have we considered sort of looking at these specific plans that embed the many years of character that these neighborhoods have had, and looking at what it would make to convert those into being normative or prescriptive, such that it would be qualifying as objective designs, at least to some extent?
That is why I completed that study exercise that's in your staff report, of looking at those themes from all of those existing design documents as a way of saying, if these, and they clearly are through the adoption process, if these are priorities in the city of Cupertino, let's do our best to consolidate them and to transform those as best it can, it's not always easy, into objective standards. And that's one reason, again, when I saw so many guidelines and statements about diversity, and about, you know, avoiding difficult frontages where you're afraid to walk in front of, you know, those are two examples where I thought, all right, we need to make sure there's flexibility here. We need to make sure we're focusing on ground floor design. Let's make sure there are standards for friendly landscaping and widths of retail frontages and requirements for seating for passersby, things like that. So that's why that, that first task in, in Placework's contract was to say, let's go through it all first from 1982 onward. And, you know, things obviously need to be relevant. There are things in 1982 that simply, you know, we need to look over, but any of these relevant standards that were based on existing community input at the time, and are therefore relevant to the community, let's highlight those, and let's do our best to transform those.
So, oh, sorry. So that list looked good. I, I agreed with all of that list. I went through the questions you, you listed in the report, and I kind of wrote up my answers on that, so they don't map exactly to the questions you have here. But I, I did have quite a lot, so how, should I just go through it, or should we take turns, or how do you want to?
From my perspective, remember, I'll be going through this recording and, you know, creating a list for myself.
I know, but I don't want to be the only one talking, so.
Yeah, if the vice chair had a comment, then maybe we can go back.
No, I was actually going to answer the questions as well, so why don't we just go down the line and start with you?
Oh, okay. So, so like I said, I didn't, I organized them based on the questions you sent, so I have a slightly different approach, but I think for the multifamily and mixed-use projects on, on major corridors, the, one of the main things that concerns me is the, is kind of our, our, our kind of inadequate retail strategy. You know, it's like, so we, we try to require a certain percentage of the, of each development to be retail. But what that ends up doing is it creates small pockets of scattered retail that, that don't really create any synergy, and we're, honestly, we're setting up those retail shops, or whatever they are, retail commercial developments to fail, because they're, they're not clustered together, we're not creating destinations. So, so I feel like there needs to be a better retail strategy, so instead of saying, you know, well, A, we should, we should be looking more about how we encourage retail by doing other kinds of concessions, you know, to, to make it financially viable for the, for the developers. But beyond that, in, try and think across, like, how do we create kind of clusters of retail so that we are creating destinations for neighborhoods, almost like a 15-minute city kind of thing, right? Where you have the, the landscaping, but you, you create kind of like pocket neighborhoods, right? Where they have their local bodega neighborhood kind of thing, where they can go banking, they can go shopping, they can go, you know, to the cafe and to the restaurant or whatever. So, so really kind of rethink our retail strategy and, and create these clusters, I think would be a, a big one for me. I have more. Oh, I'll let somebody else speak.
Okay, so I wanted to answer, I guess, a few of your questions. I have gone through some neighboring cities objective design standards and had some thoughts on this. So I, I think there's a lot of things that you could put in here, but I'll, I'll try to, I think for the sake of the broad ODS, I'll keep mine high level to the most important things. I think first of all, would it be possible to have different objective design standards for multifamily that is adjacent to R1, single-family neighborhoods? Because then, you know, then you have privacy concerns. Well, you could have multifamily that is in an urban area, which then you're not impeding on the privacy of a neighborhood.
Yeah, many objective design standards, certainly ones we create, have typically what are called context-sensitive standards, where there's a daylight plane standard, which talks about shadow. That's a boilerplate one, we can do better than that. There are standards for window placement, where, you know, your window, if you're above an R1 district, your windows need to be offset by 20 feet from any existing windows, so any direct view is not into that neighboring building. There are a lot of ways to do this. There are, you know, landscape buffers of a certain height, if you're near, so the answer is yes, we can absolutely do it.
Right, yeah, I think that's something that I would want to be considered, just from a privacy standpoint, for the R1 neighborhoods that are neighboring. The second is around landscaping and open space. I think, you know, to the extent that we don't create sort of like concrete jungles, and we do have, you know, some sort of regulation. I, I don't think this would be onerous from a cost standpoint, but it's really a matter of making sure that, you know, we have street trees X number of feet, certain percent ratio of hardscape to landscaping. So we'd want to include that, and I don't think it would be too costly. And then the third is, I've noticed a lot of objective design standards have a lot of focus on the facade, and I, I feel like what that is leading to is actually a disjoint between the front of the building and the back, because the developer is focusing all of their resources on building like a really nice facade, and then the back is like a blank building. And so I think to the extent that we can have something that encourages.
A wraparound standard, where you're encouraged to, to integrate that base, middle, top facade on all four sides, or three probably.
Right, exactly, because I think for multifamily, once it goes above three floors or so, you can see the backside, no matter where you are. So the facade doesn't matter as much. So I think those are sort of my three larger ones that I would start with, and without I defer to the rest of the questions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go next. Did you want to add something?
Uh, no, I'll let you go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and keep our comments brief and try to get through this. But I think just staying on the broad theme, what I hear from residents is the topmost concern for residents is privacy, how it affects the neighborhood around them, as well as those living in these, in these properties, how much of privacy they get, so I would definitely look at. look at standards that govern privacy aspects. I think we are a city that differentiates ourselves from some of the other gentrified or higher-density cities, so looking at aesthetics, I think, is, is something that is an appeal to both the current residents and future residents, and why they want to live in Cupertino. And so I'd say continuing to look at aesthetics that makes this a destination that people want to be, want to be in, and feel like there's a character to it, rather than just more units in place. So I would prioritize aesthetics, I'd prioritize privacy, and certainly the ground floor aspects, because we are a city that values our ability to use multimodal transport, whether it be walking, or biking, or just enjoying our heart of the city. And so, given we are talking about these larger projects that hopefully are more in the heart of the city, we'd like to see a focus on the ground floor design that makes it welcoming and livable, as well as enjoyable. So that would be my three. Commissioner Feng?
Yeah, so I had a couple of comments. I think that, again, kind of on a more general basis, the particular set of information that's provided to us kind of reflects the fact that the people are building townhouses now. I hope that we can think, maybe think beyond that in terms of, of how we, how we put together a set of objective design standards, because I don't think we can achieve the housing, the housing numbers that we want to have, if everybody wants to build townhouses. So one of the questions I kind of asked, you know, before about the city was divided into different areas. You know, I think that that's probably a good thing. The, you know, the core, the heart of the city areas along Stevens Creek, you know, did call in the past for more, for greater density. I hope that there are standards that reflect that. So I definitely would support having, you know, having standards that differentiate from large, large projects versus small. In particular, I don't know, I mean, this is beyond, maybe a little beyond the scope of the objective design standards. But, you know, we have a couple townhouse projects that are being proposed right now, you know, right in that, in that core area. And the interesting question is, you know, how do you, financing makes that, is what is pushing that today, and I hope there would be some way to undo that, even though, you know, I would welcome that, I would welcome the housing they would bring, but it's unfortunate, you know, to be, just to not be having discussion about larger buildings in that area. And so I think the part of that is really, you know, the, the design standards, you know, hopefully those can reflect, reflect those things, so we don't focus a lot on, you know, how do we build townhouses, you know. So that, I think that's an important, an important thing. We didn't have a, we didn't have, when the city was first built, you know, given the agricultural nature, there wasn't the normal kind of grady that you would hope to see, that a planner would hope to see, where it's, you know, dense along the arteries, and then there's, you know, perhaps a district which is more like apartments, primarily apartments and then single-family homes. So I hope, again, that those things would be reflected as something that, that we try to capture, a way to say that in the objective design standards. So in that respect, as you said, and I think, so first of all, that was a great answer to the question that I'd asked you before. You know, you can, you can apply these standards anywhere, right? And I think that's, that's an important part of that. But I think trying to have a clear path, and having this process be, you know, another way to kind of get people to think about, you know, if you build big here, then that lets you build smaller elsewhere. And, you know, and I think that, you know, the objective design standards, you know, given a choice between, you know, if, if the city creates a bunch of standards which are restrictive and prevent people from building anything, then of course, they will waive them all, and you'll kind of get, you kind of get what you get. I think if there's a statement where it really comes, it comes clearly, you know, that the people spoke about things that, you know, a larger structure, you know, a larger multifamily housing, how the, the kinds of things we would hope to see there. I think that that really, you know, may encourage, you know, may encourage somebody to actually try to build more along those lines.
I mean, you just made a great point, as did the chair earlier, talking about privacy.
Yeah.
I see these, and this was in my proposal, each section opens up with a guiding intent statement. That's subjective. And the chair worded it wonderfully in talking about privacy. To me, that polished statement would lead those privacy standards. So a reviewer or reader thinks, all right, that's where these standards are going. Even though that's not something I have to follow exactly, that's leading me into those standards. What you were just saying could be, you know, a guiding statement for that whole section about large projects. This is the city's overall priorities here. These are why we created these standards. Now here they are.
The other thing I just, the other note that I had was, you mentioned adding, having a, having an objective standard for offset windows. That's really great. I hope that that comes back.
Okay, great.
You know, I don't think there's anything like that in our, in our code today, other than things like, you know, the, you know, certain windows can only be, you know, can't be full length. So I think that's great, and I hope to see that one come back.
So to this first question about the multifamily and mixed-use, mixed-use projects on major corridors, you know, when I look at some of the projects that are built in Cupertino with failed retail, it always seems to come down to parking. Trevigna, the one at City Center, partially at Metro, and, oh, and especially at Montebello. You know, the retail is an afterthought. It's often, sometimes there is parking, but it's not, it's not obvious. And while I hate to have a parking lot be right in front of a building, if you want the retail to actually survive, it really does need some way for, to have parking for people that don't live there to patronize that retail. Now, of course, the developer could, and we just saw this recently, say, you know, I'm going to reduce the retail, reduce, 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 and to zero, because it's, it's just not profitable. There's, you know, they'd rather put in some more housing units on that ground floor than to put in the retail. Of course, I was just down in Los Angeles, where they're building a Costco with apartments on top of it, which is very interesting. I don't know, you don't even have to ever cook, you just go down for the free samples every day. So, yeah, I just, for the larger projects, I just hope we can do something that helps the retail survive. Now, there are, the one example that has been successful is over by Panera, where the parking is in the back, and they have some seating out in front. Although I've sat out there, it's not the most pleasant place to sit with the traffic roaring by on Stevens Creek Boulevard. So by that token, maybe the parking should be in the front and the outdoor seating in the back. And for small projects, like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, the developers, they're going to build what sells, and they're going to have garages and driveways, because they can't sell it. Even if they could waive the parking requirements because of state law, they probably won't do that. And, and then finally, you know, we've got thousands of units approved in Cupertino that could break ground if they wanted to, and they're not doing it. What they want to build is townhouses. And I don't know when that's going to change. Our population has shrunk, so there, you know, maybe less demand now. But, yeah, for the foreseeable future, I just see townhouses being, you know, what gets built, including on Stevens Creek Boulevard. You know, we approved one over by Stelling, on Stevens Creek, near Stelling, and it's just one townhouse project after another.
Could you see, I'll throw this out, is this, does this pattern warrant townhouses as their own section in the document with its own guiding statement, pulled out of that, that larger section on block level projects?
Perhaps, since that, that seems to be what everyone is building, you know, maybe that would be a good idea.
It doesn't necessarily mean so many new standards. It's a, it's a symbolism of that, of that value, and that, that local attempt or need to control this product and, all right, that's, that's...
I mean, I would like to see some larger buildings as well, but it just seems we approve them, and they get pushed out, and pushed out, and pushed out, and now with the financing, and with the, you know, the falling population, not just in Cupertino, but in other cities, you know, throughout the area, there's just going to be, you know, less demand. You know, when someone has their restricted stock units and a lot of money, they're not moving into a high-density rental apartment. They're going to buy a house or a townhouse somewhere, whether it's in Cupertino, or out in Mountain House, or somewhere else.
So if I may...
All right, thank you.
I may try to move us along here, because I think we're going to take much longer than we have here. So why don't we do this? If you can run through your questions, I think it's in the staff report, and everybody hopefully has the staff report, so we'll give commissioners five minutes to run through their feedback, but if you can hit your questions up first, so that we're not...
Okay. I think there's been a lot of cross-referencing the other questions. I'm fine believing as it is, and if you feel like you have input that you haven't added, please add it.
But if you might just walk through the questions, just so we have your context and what you're really looking to get out of it. So you take a, you know, hopefully a brief amount of time to just hit your questions up, and then we'll go.
All right. These were my others, which I called residential design on the ground, its impacts. These are larger issues. How does poor design impact residents? How can these impacts inform the ODS? What recent design trends concern you, and which do you support? This was my way of wondering if there are actual projects that you see where you, oh, this was an example of something, I just, I want to move away from this, you know, or I'd like to really highlight this and make sure we keep doing this, whether it's a certain entryway type, or, you know, I just heard from Chair Schart about, or excuse me, Commissioner Schart, about, you know, parking and, you know, focus on seating at the, at the front, things like that. Again, these were just meant to guide. If nothing comes up, that's fine, also.
Was this your last slide with questions? Oh, it was. Okay, very good. So why don't we do this, then? Just go around the table, take hopefully no more than three minutes or four minutes, and, and hit up these responses?
All right, I'll go fast. Okay, so here are kind of the big themes that I wanted to make sure we touch on, that I felt like were, some of it was maybe tangential, but not, some of it not at all. So walkability wasn't touched that much at all. I mean, I know you mentioned the word pedestrian a couple of times, but the idea of a walkable city, and, you know, wider sidewalks, more greenery, more mature trees for more benches, you know, just creating a more welcoming environment for walkability, connectivity between neighborhoods. With major developments, make sure they're well-connected to the neighborhoods surrounding them. That's a big one, I think. Access to nature, so making sure that every resident is, you know, no more than a five-minute walk from some nature, creating pocket parks, parklets. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of creative ways that we can create nature, and more opportunity for nature for residents, no matter where they are. So we're not, you know, they're not surrounded with the concrete jungle and heat islands. Placemaking, I think, is really important, and creating that sense of community, fostering kind of social interactions. There's great examples of cities doing placemaking, you know, in a lot of really creative ways, and I would like to, to see us encourage that. And I think parklets and mini-parks go along with that really well. Mature trees and landscaping, not just for the privacy, which I think is, is very important, but also to increase the attractiveness of the neighborhoods. Outdoor seating for restaurants and cafes, really encouraging that in all of the retail development that we do to, you know, and, and, yeah, I think that would mean putting the parking to the back of the side, or something like that, to, to, again, make it more walkable, make it more welcoming. So I think those are kind of the, the guiding spirits. And then more options for aging in place. So encouraging the developers to, to be more creative in terms of helping residents find ways to stay in their, in their neighborhoods, you know, and create this architecturally-integrated, middle-density housing that's mixed into single-family homes to allow our seniors to sell their homes, which are often their retirement savings, and move into a smaller home, but maintain their neighbors, their friends, their, you know, their shops. And I think those are kind of the big ones, yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Linskok. Vice Chair Sosha Rom.
So I'll hit your questions real quick, the ones that we haven't covered yet. The, I guess, the concerning trends, just adding on what Commissioner Linskok said, I think greenery and, and urban forest is something that would be important for the city. It is in keeping with our character, where we are adjacent to the hills, and kind of blend into the rest of the countryside as you head southwest or south. And so certainly avoiding concrete jungles and prioritizing our landscaping. I think our specific plans also kind of try to maintain the character of each neighborhood as you progress through the city. So focusing on avoiding the ability to just kind of pack these things into concrete jungles that may not suit the nature of Cupertino. I think that's, that's an area of concern. The other one that I'll add there is just continuing to look at, how do you optimize the space that you have? You know, we have certain regulations around max height and so on, that are trying to limit how high these constructions go. So if there's ways that we might, within those objective design standards, still try and enforce those limits, so that we can still enjoy the skyline that, you know, we have on our west and on our south side. I think trying to avoid situations where we continue to scale in height, I think that'd be of importance to the city and the residents. I talked about privacy earlier, making sure that we don't lose privacy. I think that's an area of concern. In terms of design trends that contribute positively, I, I think the design trends that we've seen around this, constructions where they pay attention to the aesthetics, to the facade, I think it is an important part of the city. It does, it does add the character to the city, so I think it's important to balance it, of course, with all sides of the development. But the facade is an important part of the city, and the, the walkability, the livability is, is an important part of it. So looking at facade design, I think, is, is important. And then I think we covered pretty much everything else here. You asked for examples, which were positive or negative. I'll throw out one, you know, we had the Oaks, which was a beautiful, nice green foliage of oaks, as we had, and that's been replaced with a tree scape that is very sparse, and is even in its mature state unlikely to be anything that's a shadow of its former self. So I really encourage us to think about, how do we bring a green canopy to Cupertino? Because a green canopy benefits the developer, the properties are probably more valued, they attract an audience to the city, so definitely prioritize a green canopy, that is in keeping with our neighboring cities as well. And with that, Commissioner Feng?
I just have a couple things, I guess I wanted to say. I hope that in the, you know, the future recommendations, that there's a, a good delineation of kind of small, medium, large, where, you know, small is the kind of, as you could poke that, pointed at here, you know, duplex, triplex, the kinds of things. Medium, I guess, I don't know if medium is, is town, is the townhouse world. And then, and then to actually have a, you know, express a clear vision on, on buildings that are larger in scale. You know, I think that, again, I think that's probably key to, to success, in terms of trying to, trying to meet the housing objectives and to try to, you know, and for the health of the city as well, in the longer term. I also wanted to speak in support, Commissioner Linskok, but actually, a lot of people here have spoken about placemaking. One of the things that could, one of the things that's difficult is if you, if you take a building that has, you know, 40 units in it, and you say, okay, I want you to put a commercial space in it. When it has to do that and stand alone, it's generally not going to be very successful. And so there's a lot, I think this actually had come up in our last meeting, Commissioner Linskok had suggested, at the Oaks development, if there were an opportunity to kind of concentrate commercial areas together. If there's a way to express that, if something is, there is a preference for this, that I think that that actually would be something that's a, a strong statement to make. So I hope that that's something that you consider, find great examples, and sell people on that. You know, individually, on a single project, it may not make sense if we're lucky and have, you know, and have a district kind of appear, where, you know, buildings are a little bit larger than, than the ones that are there today, you know, appear, then, then I think there's really a good opportunity for that to be successful. I definitely think that economic considerations drive a lot of this. That's probably out of the scope for these standards, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about, you know, you can't solve that problem. You can't solve that problem, but at the same time, I hope you can pretend, pretend that those aren't the only things driving, so that we don't end up with a bunch of, you know, here's, here's, here are, here's the city's statement on how to build townhouses.
Right.
And I think, otherwise, you know, I mean, I think there's, there were some good things here today, and hopefully you heard some good stuff from up here as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll go into the design trends that I supported.
All right, so I'll go into the design trends that I supported, and one of them is what was going to happen at the Hamptons, where it's 342 units, and we approved another 600. They were going to do 942, and it was a, you know, well-designed project, a lot of open space, and unfortunately, that project has not moved forward. I think it's been eight years now since the approval, and it's like a lot of other projects in the area, just the high-density housing does not make financial sense, and even though the Hamptons is right next to the Apple spaceship, you would think that the rents would be high enough to make it financially viable, but, you know, I've talked to the people from Irvine multiple times, and it's like the economics just don't work out. And it's a great location, right next to the Cupertino Village Shopping Center, so I would love, love that kind of a trend where you can go higher density but keep the green space and have it adjacent to viable retail. And yeah, I'm not sure, you know, how you do that. And Main Street, Main Street is retail, but they have housing instead of housing with token retail. And I think that's a key thing. When you have retail and then add housing, that can work. When you have housing and just add a tiny amount of retail, it's just not going to have the, the amount of retail for it to be a destination. And I'm not sure what the solution is there, you know, with the state of retail these days.
A final, just a word of caution to everybody here is that these design guidelines can't change where things go. That is part of the general plan land use map, and I really want everyone here to understand, these are all great points, but, but this is not going to change where retail can be in the city. It is only going to regulate the design of that retail. So I want to make sure everybody understands that, that, you know, that's really outside of the scope of this, the general land, the general plan land use map is the guiding regulation for where things go, and we are not going to change the general plan land use map.
If I can just clarify what I mean by, what I meant by the retails, like, I understand we can't.
Oh, I think I understand what you were saying.
Yeah.
About, about creating connections and.
Right, but let's say you have, you know, two buildings next to each other, it's like, encourage them to put their retails close to each other, right? Or if you have one building that has like pocket retail, no, put it all together, you know, it's like, so those kinds of things I think we can influence within this, these guidelines, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can't force anything, but we can adopt things that would maybe encourage a good developer to consider those instead of, you know, not doing it. And yeah, I mean, some mixed-use retail has been successful, and I'm hoping that if anything ever gets built at Marina, that they have successful retail as well. I mean, that's another project that was approved, you know, many, many years ago and still has not moved forward because the economic issues. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
I had just one quick comment. I did mean to highlight, I noticed on the following takeaways from this process that was listed in the staff report. It said one takeaway was minimal parking presence. The visual impact of parking lots and structures is considered a design liability in Cupertino. I don't know that I would agree with that, and I think that we need parking, so I don't know if there's, you know, where that conclusion came from, if there's a way to maybe like reshape that, because we do need parking and I don't think it's a liability.
No, that, that's just the location of parking out in front is what's, there are many policy statements and guidelines in past documents that say keep parking behind, not on the street, because it's not a good pedestrian environment. So I didn't mean to, I'm sorry if the wording was strange, but yeah, it wasn't meant as a statement of reducing parking or saying it's not necessary, it was just parking in front.
Okay, very good. Thank you to all the commissioners. I want to keep us moving here. I know we have another agenda item, but in just looking through my notes as the commissioner spoke, I think there was a common theme of making this a destination that is livable, that is enjoyable, that is a place to go to where people have things to do, retail, urban forest, connectivity to, you know, walkable networks, and privacy came up, I think, parks came up, avoiding heat islands and concrete jungles. So in general, I think you get the sense that we want to keep Cupertino's character and continue to enhance and make it a livable, enjoyable place that people want to come to.
Great summary.
And with that, if you have any closing thoughts before we wrap this up?
No, I just would encourage you in my staff report to council for that study session, I'll be summarizing your comments there, you know, to make sure that you feel like everything is, has been recorded.
Okay, wonderful. And then in closing, I want to encourage us to try and innovate on how we do stakeholder outreach. I think the community outreach process doesn't work, and so anything that we can think of in innovations and reaching out to a diverse section of stakeholders, whether it be town home developers that have a sense of what appeal actually sells, so that we get people that actually want to move in and these units actually get constructed, because a profitable developer is one that's going to add units to the city, so. Wonderful. Thank you for your effort and hope to see you sooner rather than later.
Thank you so much.
And thanks to staff for keeping this item progressing. With that, we will take a quick break while our transportation friends get to set up out here. Welcome Chad, welcome David, Matt. We'll take maybe a nine-minute break and resume at the bottom of the hour. Thank you.
What I'm going to do is not.
Okay, we are back. Very good. So thank you for your patience to staff. I think the next item on the agenda, we have no old business or new business, is Agenda Item Three, which is the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study, and is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair, again. We actually have here, we're graced by the presence of three Public Works Department staff, and they will be making the presentation related to the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study. And with that, I will hand it off to, I think, Matthew. Matt is doing the presentation tonight.
And I want to welcome Matt and David and Chad. Thank you for, for joining us here today, and hopefully this is a better hour than the last time Chad was here, so thank you for that.
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Matthew Schrader, Senior Transportation Planner for the city, and I'm going to be presenting on the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study, which is a multi-agency long-range transportation planning study. So before we really get into it, just some brief background.
Sorry, if I can pause you again, I don't believe the remote participants are seeing the screen.
Hmm, it's visible on the monitors inside here.
Not in the zoom. Not for our remote participants. If you can ask the video team.
I think that is visible now.
Yeah, now we can, yep.
Is it visible now?
Yeah.
Okay. So brief background on how we got to where we're at today. Really started in 2017, when staff from corridor agencies began to meet semi-regularly just to discuss regional issues and how they could partner to enhance the corridor. That working group was then formalized in 2019, when council adopted a resolution supporting Cupertino's participation in this project to study the corridor, and that project started in 2022. Cupertino's participation in the study was explicitly directed by the council adopted resolution, which stated that Cupertino would support a complete street study and continue the conversation about potential high-capacity transit so long as it followed these requirements, not use general-purpose lanes and negatively impact traffic, be grade-separated and time-competitive with the automobile, and consider an alternate alignment along I-280. A little bit about the project area. It spans nine miles, crosses Cupertino, Santa Clara, San Jose, and County right-of-way, and the center line for the Boulevard designates the right-of-way in many areas, most notably between Lawrence Expressway and Winchester Boulevard. Adding to the complexity of the project area, the roadway's width and lane configuration vary in different sections. As you can see from this graphic, some areas have bike lanes, some have on-street parking, and other portions have no bike lanes at all. And then lastly, I think it's helpful just to note the importance of the corridor, as it includes key destinations like Deans of College, Deeronon Station, and Valley Fair. So the project was driven at a high level by a steering committee comprised of elected officials from each of the project agencies. The steering committee then decided to establish a community advisory group, which was made up of neighborhood representatives from various parts of the corridor. The project consisted of three primary phases, which were based heavily on community outreach. That included identifying community needs, developing a vision for the corridor, and then coming up with project recommendations for helping to achieve that vision. Each jurisdiction was provided with an equivalent amount of outreach that included sit-downs with specific groups and steering committee meetings that were held in each jurisdiction. In addition to online webinars and open public meetings, Cupertino residents were directly engaged in the following ways, with the Deans of Farmers Market and Flea Market being key touchpoints for the outreach team. During the first phase of the project, various outreach methods were used to identify community needs along the corridor, and this graphic was developed after summarizing those different community input methods, just to visualize the level of comfort and convenience for different transportation modes across the corridor. And the image in the lower right is from the Deans of Farmers Market and some of the outreach that happened there. The outcomes from each phase informed the subsequent phase. In Phase One, the community identified key issues in the corridor. This led to the development of general concepts for a vision that were formed by the CAG and the public, and then from there, individual project recommendations were developed. And these project recommendations are projects that came from existing agency plan documents. The vision was an iterative process that took a couple of months to develop, and it's comprised of two parts, the first of which is here, and it's a general statement that the corridor agencies should really strive to create a corridor that is safe and enjoyable for all ages and abilities, as well as all transportation modes. And then the second part of the vision goes into detail about the elements that can be implemented to achieve that broader vision. This includes an emphasis on transit, the need to be pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, and consider the need for efficient automobile travel. So to realize this vision, the community looked at existing agency plan projects, like I mentioned, those projects which could be advanced to help create the corridor that was described in the vision. And during this phase, various projects were evaluated by the community to see which they felt should be prioritized, and then those community-selected projects were then categorized into three timeframes, the near, mid, and long-term projects. This was originally called the implementation plan, but really should be thought of as the recommendation plan, which is why at the final steering committee meeting in December, the steering committee renamed that chapter of the report, the recommendation plan. So the first of the near-term projects are the corridor identity maintenance projects, and this is really a package of programs that are placemaking-oriented, just to make the corridor a more enjoyable experience, which is one of the primary goals of the vision statement. The second group of the near-term projects relate to the transit-first vision for the corridor, and these are projects that would be led by VTA with ongoing coordination and approval from each agency. And the recommended projects included in this bucket are all policy-oriented and just emphasize the need for corridor-wide coordination, just to optimize existing transit service along Stevens Creek. And then again, consistent with this community vision of a safer, more enjoyable corridor, various bike and ped projects were also identified. Additionally, the need to add street trees was identified, just to, again, improve the overall feel of the space. As I'm sure all of you know from your own experiences, Cupertino has great street trees that prominently line the corridor, as you can see here in the image. So the next category is the midterm, are the 10-year projects, and these consist of intersection and crossing projects that enhance safety at key locations. And during the biking tour that happened during the outreach, participants went down and visited the McClellan and Deans of intersection and remarked that this is exactly the type of protection that they would like to see be implemented along Stevens Creek. And then lastly, we have the long-term project, which is to further study the potential for grade-separated high-capacity transit while also adhering to Cupertino's stated resolution that we consider an alternate alignment along I-280. And the example project timeline you see here is an estimate provided by VTA that's based off of the East Ridge Light Rail Extension Project. So at the final steering committee in December, the steering committee amended and then approved the plan, changing it from implementation to recommendation, and it also kicked it back to each jurisdiction to review within a local context. The plan then went to the BPC in April, and the BPC recommended that the city council accept the plan with the qualifications that it has made clear, that the city maintains final decision-making authority over the projects that are in the city, and it also reaffirmed the city's commitment to the project under the 2019 resolution. The study is currently making its way through each jurisdiction's approval process, and the steering committee is eyeing a meeting date sometime in the summer to discuss progress on each jurisdiction accepting the plan, as well as to give staff direction on how to proceed. And then at this time, it's also really important to note that if the city does decide to accept the plan, that in no way constitutes the approval of all the projects within the plan, and each and every one of those projects is still at the discretion of the city with respect to whether or not it wants to implement those. So the recommended action for this item is for the planning commission to recommend that the city council accept the Stevens Creek Boulevard Corridor Vision Study as it is.
Can you go back to the last slide? Where does it say "as it is" here?
It doesn't say, sorry.
You just put that in, okay.
Did he have more slides? Was that the last slide?
No, that was the last slide.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your breezing through this and still keeping us informed. Appreciate the presentation as always, and appreciate a full house from staff. So before we open it up for questions, just a couple of clarifying things. I just want to get the, the recommendation, if you might put up the recommendation again.
Yes.
And maybe if you might keep the presentation in case we need to flashback to any of the slides.
Yes.
Yeah, so the recommendation, does that factor in the input from the Bike-Ped Commission?
It will, yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that what we are reviewing here is a staff presentation that went into the Bike-Ped Commission, and then your recommendation is to accept the recommendations from the Bike-Ped Commission, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And if you might comment on the, on the process through which you got stakeholder input? Were there any businesses that had a chance to give input?
So the consultant team contacted many businesses along the corridor, most notably the automobile dealerships. I know we received public comment that those folks weren't notified. Those folks were notified. The consultant reached out to about 10 dealerships. They worked with the, where's the Silicon Valley, Silicon Valley Auto Dealership Association, where they were able to get in touch with Penske Auto, who oversees Audi and Porsche, and they were also able to talk to Subaru and Infiniti. And they contacted a list of 10 dealerships along the way and didn't hear responses from those.
Okay, sounds good. I think the general question that seems to come up is not enough community outreach, but I think we'll just throw in diversity of stakeholder outreach as well, just making sure we get all parties at the table that need to have an input on the boulevard, so. I will open it up to the commissioners if they have any questions at this time.
Yeah, I had a quick question. I wanted to clarify around, sorry about that, the transit signal priority. We have had some concern from residents, and I wanted to understand, how does it actually work? Would... Would technically the amount of green light time on Stevens Creek increase, basically to make way for each bus? You know, would it actually lead to a faster Stevens Creek, but then maybe slower intersections that come up to Stevens Creek? If you could just clarify that, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer that question. Good evening, commissioners. I'm David Stillman, the Transportation Manager for the city. Happy to be here tonight to discuss this important project with you all. Transit signal priority is a feature that is locally implemented at each traffic signal that you define certain parameters that allow buses that may be behind schedule to get an advanced green generally, to allow them to catch up to the schedule that they are supposed to be on. And the way it works is generally either a green light for Stevens Creek Boulevard, for example, will come on a few seconds early, or it may, the red light for that particular movement might be delayed by a few seconds to allow a bus to proceed. And those are parameters that are completely under the city's control. That's not something that, so even though VTA, for example, would coordinate this effort among all of the jurisdictions, every city maintains control of its intersections and can determine what those parameters are in terms of, you know, additional green time or moving it up. That generally results in little to no additional delays for vehicles because we're only talking about a few seconds of advance or retarding of green times to allow the buses to stay on schedule.
So does, if there is a green time extended for a bus, does it later on get detracted? Or is there a later, a subsequent, longer red time that makes up for that, or is that up to the city to decide?
It's up to the city to decide. The signals generally are responsive to the traffic at the time, so if the intersection determines that there's a need to hold the green a little longer on the next cycle to allow cars through, it can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I wonder what the width of the corridor is. Is it just Stevens Creek Boulevard? And the reason I'm asking is I'm, I look, I bicycle a lot, and I look at other cities like Palo Alto and Mountain View, and they specifically are trying to get the bicycles onto bike boulevards which are not on El Camino or Alma or Central Expressway. And this seems to try, and when I ride my bike to San Jose, I'm either using Prunridge to park, or I'm on the south side of 280 and using, crossing at Midi and using Williams, and it's a much more pleasant ride because you're not on the street with cars, you know, zooming, zooming past you really close, and you have less intersections. So I'm just wondering, when you say corridor, is it just Stevens Creek Boulevard, or does it extend a half-mile or a kilometer to either side, or what?
Yeah, so the corridor is a half-mile north and a half-mile south, so all the analysis that went into this project was considering that, as well as key connections to the corridor. So those parallel routes are things that were considered and are included in terms of the bike treatments. The plan isn't saying we need to install bike lanes on Stevens Creek. It's saying we need to look at the corridor as a whole and understand how we can enhance it so that it's more pedestrian and bike-friendly.
Okay, so it's really emphasizing Stevens Creek, and like, Prunridge is more than, Prunridge is .6 miles from Stevens Creek, so that would not be considered part of the corridor, is that correct?
One of the recommendations in the study is for cities to implement their relevant plans, and the Prunridge Complete Streets Plan, or I'm blanking on the exact name for it, was one of the plans that was identified. So when thinking about the corridor, it shouldn't be thought of just as Stevens Creek alone, but how do we move people east-west on all the roads that are available to us?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, so I'm looking at bottom of page 50, I think figure 14 and 15, and that's what you're referring to, right? The kind of a complete network, not just protected bike lanes on Stevens Creek Boulevard, but the surrounding streets as well.
Correct. If you're referring to the map of the bike network in the plan, yes.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, the reason people bike on Stevens Creek Boulevard is because it's often the most direct and fastest way to get there versus, you know, meandering 40 minutes for a 10-minute, otherwise, you know, 10-minute destination distance. And also, a lot of the destinations are on Stevens Creek Boulevard, so if you want to go to a restaurant, or you want to go to Main Street, or you want to go to a café or the bank, you don't have a choice but to bike on Stevens Creek. So I do think it has to be part of the corridor, and we can't just say, okay, we're just going to put it on.
Just to remind commissioners, we're doing questions right now. We will go to discussion shortly.
Does that make sense to you? That's the question.
That does make sense, yes.
All right, thank you.
Wonderful, appreciate the creativity there. Other questions? I do have a question. Can you comment on the funding that the city put into this during the period, looking backward, and then what is sort of the funding expectation looking forward? Because the report does talk about ongoing, in perpetuity, coordination across the members of the corridor, and what does that translate to in funding for the city?
So the city put in about $154,000, I believe, to cooperate in the vision study to get to the point that we are at today. That is the end of the city's current financial obligation to the project. With regard to the future, how the study or the process proceeds from this point on hasn't been exactly determined. There will be some form of steering committee, which will most likely continue into the future, to discuss how to move forward with some of these recommendations in the various jurisdictions. Any projects there would need to be, most likely, outside sources of funding identified in order to move on most of the projects, at least the medium and the long-term projects in the project list. So the cities would, to the extent that they remain to be involved, would cooperate to determine outside funding sources for those projects. And that's one reason for the partnership, is that makes the likelihood of being selected for a grant a lot, lot more likely if the agencies that provide the funding see that it's multi-jurisdictional partnership project moving forward.
And so to follow up on that, then, the $154,000, was that offset by grants?
I believe that was general fund money.
It was, okay. And then if we were to recommend adopting this, is the thought process then that we were to apply for grants that would offset the cost of that? Is that how we should think of this, or is this an ongoing added cost burden that the city would be taking on if it chose to pursue this?
There's no, there's no funding obligation to the city by accepting the plan this evening. The $154,000 has been spent and will not be reimbursed through grants. You can't apply for reimbursement for money that's already been spent. But the city can participate to the extent that it desires or not, moving forward with respect to any of the recommendations in the project. There's no obligation by accepting the plan this evening or at the city council.
And then, sorry, go ahead, Chair. Did you want to?
And I was just going to say, any further spending for this project would have to be approved by city council.
And then the commentary, I think, towards the wrap of the corridor study was that the recommendations went from an implementation plan to a set of recommendations, I believe was, I think, the term you used, and then you said, local guidelines would be allowed to take effect, and they were recommending implementing relevant local plans. Is that how I interpreted, did I get that right? Was that your closing?
Yeah, so it was always, it's always thought of as a recommendation plan. The term "implementation" was probably used inappropriately and scared some folks. And then one of, to your second part, one of the recommendations that's included in this plan is for cities to just do what they say they're going to be doing anyway with respect to their multimodal plans or the Prunridge plan.
And so on that note, you know, we have a number of local plans. We have the ATP, we have the Vision Zero, we have the Stevens Creek Puffered Bike Lanes. I believe we have several of these that are in progress right now. So would you say this plan is a superset of those, or is the ATP a superset of this? Does one subsume the other? How should we view these various plans?
I wouldn't say there's necessarily a hierarchy. I would say this plan is useful in that when, if the city does decide to pursue grant funding for those other projects, we have this document that we can point to to say that this project is within the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study and is critically important not only to Cupertino, but also to San Jose, Santa Clara, and the county. So you're able to demonstrate a larger impact. So if the city wants to pursue those projects, there's a better chance that those projects would be looked at more favorably by those granting agencies.
And given the other projects sort of cover the whole scope of the city versus this one is sort of corridor-focused, would you say maybe the ATP was a superset of this, and the ATP could subsume this? Is there, is there a reason to pursue both projects, or do we say that our local implementation of this shall be through the ATP, for example?
The ATP is an entirely different document, and it's scoped completely differently. This is looking at, again, those policy recommendations related to transit, those pedestrian enhancements like street trees and intersection improvements. The ATP is much more comprehensive and focused on how do we build out the city's active transportation network. So again, there's no hierarchy here.
Okay, very good. Other questions? I want to pause here if anyone wants to jump in.
Actually, since we talked a little about finance, I'm curious, in the advisory committee, was there a mechanism through which there's some recommendations or estimates of the implementation cost for this, for this plan at the end of the, at the end of the, at the end of the plan? I'm curious, was there, was there something? It seems like Cupertino comes in very high relative to the other communities there, and I'm just curious whether there's a grading factor that was applied, or is this just, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you provided, here's Cupertino's total? Or am I misreading it? I saw some gigantic projects, like San Jose had some, you know, $10 million projects there, but somehow the capital project component came in for them at a high side of 9.4 million.
You're referring to the cost estimates in the tables in the back of the plan? Yeah, those were very, very high-level cost estimates that were developed by the consultants as part of the process. Those would probably change considerably in the future as the project development proceeds and the scopes of the individual projects get better defined.
Yeah. It just, it was interesting to me in reading this because the, you know, the four communities mentioned there are kind of in the same ballpark. I mean, you know, and yet there are things like, for instance, the cost of having street trees. And Cupertino would be much lower than it would be in San Jose, just because we have trees right now and they don't, that kind of thing. Yeah, so I, part of that is just understanding, you know, to make this, to turn this into implementation, to turn this into an executable plan, it seems like that area probably, probably could use some additional refinement, but I understood that it's, it's, you know, this is just kind of a very high-level planning exercise.
Maybe a follow-on question. Thank you for including the 2019 resolution, which I believe our current commissioner was probably part of that, so he may have some history and context on that as well.
Yeah, I signed it.
If I may, if I may just make that plug there. But can you comment on whether the other cities in the corridor had a resolution to similar effect, or what was the nature of the resolution, if there was one, from the other cities? Did they, for example, agree on the concept of a grade-separated high-capacity transit? You know, I'll just pick on that one, for example.
The other cities did have resolutions. I don't recall the details of their resolutions. They're listed on the project website. Maybe we can pull those up.
But would you recall if the grade-separated high-capacity transit figured in their resolutions?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because it would be kind of odd for Cupertino to have a grade-separated high-capacity transit that ran the length of the Cupertino corridor, but not the rest of it. So I'm curious how, and maybe our Commissioner Schorf might have some history there.
I don't recall other cities signing on. I do recall that the emphasis has always been on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and at the time unanimously, we decided, hey, that's great, except that doesn't serve either Apple campus. And that's why, you know, we had mentioned that we would prefer it in the median of 280, at least in Cupertino. The other reason is it would be a lot less expensive to put it in the existing median than to do it any other way. I think at the time, it was estimated at like $50 million a mile in the median of 280, and if it was underground, it would be like a billion dollars a mile. But obviously, that can't happen. And I think that was one of the reasons we had preferred the 280 alignment. I think mainly because, you know, Stevens Creek Boulevard doesn't really go between jobs-rich areas and housing-rich areas. Those are the, more the north-south routes, like Lawrence and San Tomas. I mean, Stevens Creek will serve several shopping centers, but it's really not a route that people commute on. And we were more interested in daily, you know, how can we serve commuters, you know, maybe the ones that aren't taking the Apple corporate bus? And I think that was the main reason that we preferred 280.
Thank you.
Chair, I can answer that question.
Sure, please.
So reading from the City of Santa Clara's resolution, I'll quote, that the study considers potential options for a grade-separated high-capacity transit system for the Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor that connects the cities of San Jose, Santa Clara, and Cupertino. And from the City of San Jose's resolution, the City of San Jose supports a complete streets and near-term transit implementation plan that considers new modes of transportation and a grade-separated high-capacity transit system for the Stevens Creek corridor that connects the cities of San Jose, Santa Clara, and Cupertino.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that clarification. And so it sounds like across the corridor, there was broad alignment around the concept of a grade-separated high-capacity transit that would be the focus of this, of this study going forward. And so I'm curious, when I look at the study report, though, the word "grade separated" seems to have sort of lost focus, and I see "separated," but not "grade separated." Can you comment on how the report lost its focus on the grade-separated part of it? Or is that something staff is able to comment on?
I don't believe there was an intention that the report lose focus on the grade-separated aspect. The report contains a list of eight or so options for accommodating transit down Stevens Creek Boulevard, including grade-separated, including at-grade, with the specific note that an at-grade option, there's a cost estimate for one that excludes the Cupertino section so that we don't violate the conditions in the resolution that Cupertino City Council adopted back in 2019. So the study does not recommend a specific option. It looks, it provides information and is a very high-level study of many options for transit along the corridor. There wasn't an intention to necessarily reduce the focus from grade separation.
Okay, but if I look at the report, prominently I find "separated" as opposed to "grade separated," and some places there is "at-grade," which I don't think the resolutions that were made refer to, was there any discussion through the course of that steering committee meeting to maintain fidelity to the resolutions and focus on the grade-separated part of transit as opposed to at-grade or omitting the grade separation?
Yes, there was, but we did hear from many members of the community that wanted to consider at-grade transit, and so to be responsive to community input, it needed to be acknowledged and placed in the study.
And was there any characterization of what the nature of that changed input was? I assume going into that resolution, there was input from the same set of stakeholders. Did the conditions change between 2019 to 2025? Because if anything, I would assume COVID and everything else has changed our way of working and our way of commuting. There's a lot more online classes for De Anza College, for example. I read somewhere that 56% of De Anza students are actually online students, and so I have to imagine 2019, that may or may not have been And so I have to imagine 2019, that may or may not have been the case. Can you comment on what changed in the input?
I cannot, no. I can just speak to the input that we received from the public as a part of this process. And so we, we wanted to honor that and make sure that it was reflected in the, in the document. But again, this isn't a prescriptive requirement that Cupertino adopt any kind of an at grade, you know, transit. And there are alternatives listed for an elevated grade separated transit in conformance with the resolution that our city council passed.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, I think the concern here is we want high speed, high capacity. We, BRT as opposed to the current 523 is not really going to solve, you know, the, any issue that we see on Stevens Creek. And, you know, if we accept the study, you know, I would want to put something in there that, you know, we make it clear that we're talking grade separated.
Still doing questions, Commissioner Scharf?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bart, thank you for the reminder that it may be time to progress towards discussion. So on that note, if you want to go ahead directly.
One quick item, Commissioner Fong, you had talked about why Cupertino's section was, was high. They are looking at the entire section of Cupertino from Tantau to basically Lehigh. So we've got a very long section and we have the second largest number of intersections. And so some of those costs are associated with intersections involved. So it's just because we have a, a large section that they're looking at.
Okay, so we'll have more opportunity for questions, but I want to open it up for public comment. If we have, Madam City Clerk, if you might share how many speakers we have?
We have two speaker cards in person and then we have two, three hands raised on Zoom. They're all under the same, same names. So I want to verify that they are different people. So Zoom participants, if you don't mind, when I unmute you, please state your name.
Betsy Magus.
Can you repeat that?
Betsy Magus.
Thank you.
So Bart, I guess we're seeing more common cards coming in?
Hi, this is Sandeep Naseebah.
Thank you.
Okay, so Madam City Clerk, if we may call on the public comments, starting with folks in the room?
Sure. So our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Harry Neal, followed by Emily. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Planning Commission, again. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I attended all these meetings, was two and a half years. Lots of meetings. The consultant did a great job. I went on a bus ride from Deradon up and down the corridor. I can't walk well, so I was kind of representing a lot of the people that have mobility issues. I will say that I, one of the questions I had initially was, why was this study going from Deradon in San Jose south down to Stevens Creek Boulevard and then going up to Deanser College? I didn't really get it because to me, the corridor has always been from downtown San Jose, San Jose State, et cetera, downtown to maybe Cupertino. But why Deradon was involved, I still don't have any idea. My nephew actually lived at Deradon before he moved to Seattle. And I'm very familiar with Cahill Station there. And I still don't understand why they even wanted to have a study there. I, maybe I missed the boat there, but I missed the transit. One of my questions is that I wanted to make sure that people understood why Cupertino, why a lot of people in Cupertino did not want to have a lane lost on Stevens Creek Boulevard to BRT. At least now I know what BRT is. I used to call it fixed bus rapid transit, but I understand what BRT is now. We don't want to do that because Stevens Creek Boulevard would be completely immovable. If you take a lane off in our area, you're going to slow down school traffic, Apple traffic, emergency vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. No, 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 no. Now, I, the consultants never really discussed taking a lane off. They may have had it, talked about it briefly. But in August of last year, there was a meeting in Cupertino that was bombarded by 50 people who demanded that the city or the, the committee take one lane off of Stevens Creek Boulevard to put in BRT. I didn't get it. Well, now I understand about SB 79. And I think this was a setup to implement SB 79 prematurely. SB 79 is Weiner Bill and it's going through the houses now. I'm, I, I'm really, really concerned about this. No, 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 we don't want to do that. We, we have a lot of issues with Stevens Creek Boulevard, but remember, a lot of people drive on it. I can't walk and I can't ride a bike. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Harry Neal, followed by Emily. Welcome, Harry.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Harry Neal. I am a member of VTA Citizens Advisory Committee and a former member of the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study Community Advisory Group. Very long winded name, but I'm here today in my personal capacity. Here you will see a coalition letter that I have. The text in bold is, is the stuff that you really need to pay attention to. It says, "The committee unanimously approved a recommended plan that would transform Stevens Creek to support the safe, efficient, sustainable mobility that all users deserved. We, the undersigned, urge the County of Santa Clara, VTA, the cities of Cupertino, Santa Clara, and San Jose to approve and implement the Stevens Creek Corridor Steering Committee's recommended plan." And you will find at the end of it, a very, very long list of organizations and individuals who have signed on, including the California State Assembly members of Mark Berman, Patrick Arons, and Ash Kalra, Andrew Siegler, representing Serge, Santa Clara County, Cassandra Magana from West Valley Community Services, and Dr. Omar Torres, President of Deanser College, among many more. Beyond that, one of the things Commissioner Scharf that you mentioned was BRT. And the previous public commenter also mentioned BRT. That is a very, very specific thing. A dedicated bus lane is not the same as BRT. And this study does not propose BRT. And, and BRT as a specific mode is not on the table for this. BRT is center running almost exclusively and requires a significant infrastructure investment that side running bus lanes do not. It is also worth noting, a study out of Manetta Transportation Institute at San Jose State University, one of the best transportation institutes in the country, noted that bus lanes, when converted from a general traffic lane to a bus lane, do not increase general traffic. They actually keep it almost exactly the same. But they make buses faster, more reliable, cheaper to operate, everything that we want out of our transit agencies. But even with that, it is again worth noting that the, the caveats that Cupertino signed on to this project with when Commissioner Scharf was mayor, included not converting a lane in the city of Cupertino. So for those who are not in favor of it, you already have what you want in this city. I would also note that the, the recommendation of high capacity, grade separated transit, should it be elevated light rail, which I think would be ideal? It is very, very worth noting, at a time when many projects in the United States are some of the highest costs in the world, including here locally with Bart, VTA's elevated light rail at East Ridge, that project is actually on par with or lower than the construction costs in some low cost countries like Thailand and India. So that is a very, very affordable way of building rapid transit. It seems like a big number, but internationally, it's a very impressive cost in terms of what VTA is doing on the east side. Should there be any changes to this plan recommended by the, by the Planning Commission? This will, due to the nature of the project, have to go back to the steering committee to redevelop consensus. That would mean a minimum six month delay, realistically. On a project that is focused so heavily on safety, that means that we will be putting people at risk. That's not acceptable. Please adopt this unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Our next speaker is Emily, followed by our three Zoom speakers. Welcome, Emily.
Hello. My name is Emily Poon. I'm an ordinary citizen, not related to any group. My interest is to have everything understood by ordinary people and be really transparent in a way that is rather difficult to achieve when people are busy with their everyday lives. And all this talk has a lot of terminology that ordinary folk don't understand, like BTR and bus only lane. But what experience I have in talking to people along the corridor, which included a lot of car dealerships and also people who work in the main street restaurants is, whenever they heard about bus only lane, they are in, in great shock. They say, what buses? The buses always run empty when they're in the part of, the Cupertino part of Stevens Creek. So that is to tell you, I want to reflect the ignorance of the people, of what is going on and what these meetings are all about. Then I came in late today and I did hear the traffic engineer say that 10 dealerships were contacted by the consultants. After the meeting, I would like to get a hold of this list. And I heard the names Subaru and Audi. Why do I want these details? Because I did spend two days with another volunteer who lived in Santa Clara to go to the dealerships. And they are ignorant of all these goings on. I want to finish my job properly, match up what I have contacted with what the engineer cited, the, the consultants have contacted, and see who got the news and who did not. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Up next, we have our first Zoom speaker. Welcome.
Good evening. This is Betsy Magus. I'm a resident of the city of Santa Clara. I'm a member of the City of Santa Clara Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and also a member of the VTA Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, speaking tonight for myself. The, I'll do the bottom line first. Please recommend the, the city adopt the plan unchanged. I attended a good many of the, a good many of the workshops and I have also biked the entire length of this corridor. And I would like to thank David Stillman for coming on the Cupertino end of the, of the survey rides with us on a bicycle. Some of Cupertino's bicycle facilities today are what the rest of the cities along the corridor need to aspire to. Seema said what I was, what I was going to say already. Side streets are not as good. They are not as direct. And the destinations are, if the destination is on Stevens Creek, it doesn't do any good to be on a side street. The, I, I, I hope that the plan, I think that the plan says something already about the bicycle and pedestrian collision history. We need this plan for safety, not just, you know, it's not just a nice to have. But the, the history of bicycle and pedestrian collisions on a corridor like this also speaks to the demand. If people are riding a bike or walking, where it is this dangerous? We need to make it, we need to recognize that people want to bike and walk there and make it less dangerous. There is a lot we can do without the, without waiting for the eventual elevated grade separated transit to improve the transit that we have today. That is things like the, the signal priority and also, you know, giving the buses some dedicated space. It would not be as harmful as everybody makes it out to be as far as traffic. And it might actually help people get around, including people who can't drive. The potential separated transit is something like 20 to 30 years in the future. This is the kind of plan that only works if all of the cities work together and sign on to it and proceed to implement it. Please recommend that the city of Cupertino adopt the plan unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. We have two more hands raised on Zoom. Welcome.
This is Danny Hampton, not Henry New. I use the, I use Stevens Creek Boulevard on a regular basis. And I'm pretty sure a lot of you do too. As a, I want you to, I believe that we should implement this plan because it will both make it easier for me and others to travel along Stevens Creek and it will... Yes, I do use it a lot. I have used the buses on Stevens Creek and they are crowded during certain peak periods. In addition, I don't bike, but I know a lot of people who do. And sorry, I'm a bit nervous.
Thank you, Danny. We have one more hand raised on Zoom. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Callie Wang. I am a, I am born and raised in Cupertino, FUTS alum, and frequent traveler and visitor on the Stevens Creek Corridor by foot, by car, and by bike. So I, I've been following the, the process of outreach for the vision plan and I support it as it's written. I think it gives us a bold vision for Stevens Creek that makes it safe and attractive for businesses, visitors, residents of all ages and abilities. And I know there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of concern and confusion about specific parts of the plan. I view it as a toolbox of ways to improve livability and traffic safety on that improvement on suburban corridors. It is, Stevens Creek is a lot of things to a lot of different people. And I think having this vision plan is a good way for us to think about how Cupertino can, can get what we want out of the corridor and to improve coordination with our neighbors in San Jose and Santa Clara while preserving our local control. Again, no specific projects are mandated by this. So as, as a longtime resident, I think Stevens Creek has a unique role for Cupertino. Unlike Santa Clara and San Jose, it's not a border area. But for Cupertino, this is the heart of the city. You know, and it, it should be an attractive, inviting and walkable destination for all of Cupertino, no matter if you get around by, by car, by, by foot, by bike, or by transit. I think the vision plan aligns with the general plan that we have for the heart of the city to make it that kind of thriving, attractive place for all modes of transportation and ties into the years of planning work that Cupertino, that Cupertino has done to make Stevens Creek a, a very inviting kind of corridor. For example, I, I walk around, let's say I walk to Phil's Coffee. Like, there's so many people, I'm, you might be surprised, who are walking, who are crossing back and forth. I see families with kids. I see seniors. I see, you know, Apple employees during lunch break. It's surprisingly active for, for a major six lane road. And I think that it speaks to the potential that there is here. to the potential that there is here for making it even better for all ages and abilities for walking, for biking, for transit. On the topic of bike lanes, I don't think it's side streets or protected bike lanes. This vision plan examines the network as a whole, you know, looking to that half-mile buffer on each side. So I think this aligns with what I want to see in Cupertino. I think it aligns with a lot of folks in the city want to see as well, and it really helps us to get there and get an attractive part of the city that we've long lacked and we really deserve. So thanks, thank you for consideration. I support the vision plan.
Thank you, and we have one more hand raised on Zoom. Welcome.
Hi, City Council, I mean, High Planning Commission, I'm sorry about that. I'm Sandana Siva. I'm a student at San Jose State, and I'm from Cupertino myself, and I live on the Rancho Rinconada side of Cupertino. And I do take Bus 523 or 23 to get from Cupertino to San Jose State University. And the Stevens Creek Boulevard itself is of, like, a very, like, heavily-used corridor, especially for educational and commercial institutions, especially, like, educational institutions like Deanza College and San Jose State University. And it has, like, a heavily-used, like, bus, um, bus routes on VTA itself, like, a bus route 23 and 523. And 523 is, like, probably, like, more widely used because of the wider spacing in between the bus stops, and there are just, like, at least, like, 10,000 people on that bus, like, per day. And this would be, like, really useful because having, like, a bus lane on this, like, a Boulevard would increase, like, the ridership for VTA even more and for buses in general. And buses and public transportation is a more energy-efficient mode of transportation itself and would help with climate mitigation goals in contrast to cars, which is seen as less energy-efficient and releases much more greenhouse gases. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no hands raised on Zoom and no speaker cards.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will close public comments. I thank all the public, members of the public that offered their invaluable input. I will also sort of channel the many written comments that we got. I believe we had several residents that chose to write in, and I think some common themes there were they value their lanes, a lot of input there around not taking lanes away, a lot of input around making sure that driving is not made more troublesome, and they want to be hassle-free in their driving, and they want to enjoy the corridor without creating challenges for people that use it to commute. So just wanted to channel the written comments. And at this time, we will open it up for discussion, and members of the commission can feel free to ask questions as well. And before we do that, I just want to ask a couple of questions real quick. So for the projects that were identified here, obviously Cupertino has already made a lot of investments in its bike infrastructure and its, uh, its corridor investments in general. Would you say there are places in the, in this, in this report that you thought we were fairly well-invested in already? For example, when I look at the table, we are already funded for the Stevens Creek Boulevard bike, buffered bike lanes. I believe that project has already been prioritized and is in implementation right now for Phase 2A and 2B, I believe, or differing phases of 2A and 2B. So can you talk a little bit about what parts of this report you might consider as new work ahead of us versus work that we have invested in?
So, like you mentioned, the Stevens Creek bikeways are a huge success for the city as shown with the survey responses, and the people that participated in this project remarked that Cupertino's infrastructure made them feel more comfortable than at other places along the corridor. I think where this study has its most value is when thinking about the connections and the recommendations that we figure out how to improve connections to Stevens Creek, most notably the Lawrence Mini Trail is something that I think could help be advanced through this project and the treatments related to placemaking and just making the corridor a more pleasant, you know, place to hang out, linger, see your neighbors. So I think those are the, the areas that the city's, you know, going to benefit the most from.
Thank you. And then we got a number of comments on the transit part. Does transportation have any metrics around utilization of our VTA transit in Cupertino specifically? If you might have any metrics that you care to share?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. VTA publishes their boardings and lightings online, so you can go and, and see what ridership looks like at the, the city stops, but I don't know what those figures are offhand.
Okay. Would have been good to see some metrics in the staff report as well. At this time, public comments are closed. Thank you very much. I would, I would also like to know if there's any data we have on how many residents use our VTA transit lines versus, is there any characterization of the traffic that we get into the city or out of the city on these VTA lines in terms of who's using our lines coming in or going out?
No, I know VTA occasionally will do onboard surveys, and that would be the only way for them to determine whether or not those riders are actual Cupertino residents, but that's a, a very difficult thing to determine.
And I guess I would like to say, as we proceed down further studies of transit, that, that level of information would probably need to be pulled at that point in time. Again, keep in mind, this is a very high-level conceptual study. When we were, you know, the original resolution from the City Council was to work with VTA, San Jose, and Santa Clara to look at high-capacity transit options within Cupertino, and, and that's kind of what this report does here.
Yeah, I'm looking at the resolution. Thank you, Director Mosley. I'm looking at the resolution, and certainly, I think the focus is to look at the I-280 corridor alignment and to look at high-capacity transit that is grade-separated. I believe that's the, that's, that's the operational phrasing here. Very good. Is there any other questions before we go into discussion? Anyone else have questions? Okay. Um, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
So I was looking at the VTA dataset, and I, I was, was I correct that one of the speakers said that the 523 had 10,000 riders a day?
I, I can answer this question. I've looked into the numbers. I was actually going to talk about it during comment, but since we're asking, so the 23 and 523 bus get about 9,000 riders per weekday. If you average out across weekdays and weekends, it averages to about 7,800. If you look at the 23, the Cupertino portion of the 23-523, because the VTA does give visualizations that let you filter by city, the number goes to about 1,690 residents, or not, 1,690 riders per weekday that are going to stops in Cupertino. We don't know where they come from.
That's the combination 23 and 523.
Correct.
Okay, because I, I, I thought the speaker said 523 only, but maybe I misheard her.
I've combined 23 and 523. I'm not sure about the, oh, the speaker is probably referring to both combined because there's no way both, each one in isolation.
Right, right, of course.
Thank you, Vice Chair. That's helpful and appreciate the data point. Anyone else have questions or want to kick off discussions?
I'm happy to kick it off since we are talking about a topic that I wanted to discuss. So I think that there are some great near and midterm elements to the Stevens Creek corridor vision study that, you know, I'm happy to support. I do have significant concerns over the long-term component of this plan, which is mass transit. This originally came in 2017. That was pre-pandemic, and I think a lot has changed since then. My biggest concern is really around cost. We're proposing another $1.8 to $2.8 billion project at a time when all of our local transit agencies are encountering long-term structural deficits, and they have no way to fix it so far. As a few examples, you have BART, which has a projected operating deficit of $1.8 billion from 2027 to 2030. Caltrain is at a $605 million 10-year operating deficit. VTA just shared that they have about a $780 million 10-year structural deficit starting this year, as well as a hiring freeze. So, you know, personally, I would think that we need to focus our resources at this moment on protecting our existing transit systems that people rely very heavily on. So now is not the time to be spreading our resources more thinly. You know, at the end of the day, we are going to pay for this as taxpayers. The VTA is 86% funded by sales tax revenues. They already have three sales tax measures. They're contemplating another sales tax measure, and, you know, who knows what other taxes it'll take to get this funded. And so I also do question the forecast around 20,000 riders per day on a separated transit line. This is a somewhat unrealistic number that we have not attained anywhere in this nearby area, even including San Jose, which is much more densely populated. If you look at, currently, VTA has three light rail lines, and they each average about 5,000 riders per weekday. The newest BART extension to Molpedes, which costs billions of dollars, gets about 1,000 riders per weekday. So for whatever reason it is, we've, we've made these investments available, but people are not choosing the rail option. And, you know, I, I just talked about the 23 and 523 bus line. Those are getting about, in the Cupertino section of the bus line, is getting about 1,690 weekday riders. So this is not light rail-level demand within Cooper, at least to go in and out of Cupertino and other parts perhaps, but not in the Cupertino section. So what we wouldn't want to see is a massive investment into a line that doesn't reach its full capacity. So, you know, I, I do support many of the elements in the near and midterm portions of this plan, but personally, I think now is not really the time to be participating in mass transit. And I'd be curious to hear what the rest of the commission thinks.
So I just, you're correct about the three sales taxes. There's also a fourth tax, which is not a sales tax. It's added on as a vehicle license fee add-on, and that's in perpetuity. The first sales tax, half-cent, is in perpetuity. The other two do have expirations, I believe one in 2036 and one in 2047. So ironically, VTA, because they get so little of their revenue from fares, they kind of weathered the pandemic a lot better than BART or, or Caltrain. Plus, they, the ridership was so low that recovering was a lot, was a lot easier as well. And during the recent strike, you know, it was, hey, wait a second, they're not paying all these employees, and yet the sales tax revenue continues to roll in. You know, they probably did pretty well financially on that, which is, you know, not what we want to see. We want to have transit, not, not be on strike. But it was a good point about the finances. I don't think they could count on another sales tax passing to finance transit along separated grade. And I would remind people that we were supposed to get light rail up the median of 85. That was the plan. The median was reserved for it, and it never happened. And that was relatively cheap. At the time, it was $37 million a mile. And that rail, that line would have actually gone from housing-rich to jobs-rich areas, something that the Stevens Creek corridor does not.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
So I'd like to share, can I get, on Zoom, can I, can I be made a participant so I can share my, my screen? And while I'm waiting for that, I just want to make a comment. I understand right now, there is, there may not necessarily be enough ridership in, in some of these things, but we're not building for the past, we're building for the future. And we know that all of the cities around us, including us, have pretty aggressive housing goals. That's going to add, I think, I think it's like 130,000 new homes just in Santa Clara County alone. So I think we need to be looking at projections before we make these decisions. And the other thing that I would mention is, we're not committing to building grade-separated transit or, or any kind of transit right now, right? All we're saying is that we're, we're interested in exploring it in the future if it makes sense. So, I mean, I, that sounds reasonable to me, because if we get to a point 10 years from now that, you know, everybody has built the housing that they're required to build, and our, our streets are completely gridlocked because we've just added 260,000 more cars to Stevens Creek Boulevard and Deanza, transit might start to look pretty attractive to us. And at that point, it might make sense to, to build it. But again, that is not something we're committing to today. The vision statement that we're committing to today is that we, we think it might be something we would be willing to consider in the future. So let me just share my screen so I can, can everybody see that? Ah, okay, great. So it, it was, well, I'll start here. So I just want to remind everybody of part of what's important here, and that's the fatalities and serious injuries. Stevens Creek Boulevard was ranked number one in the Vision Zero Plan for the highest number of fatalities and serious injuries. And if you look at that, the Vision Zero Plan, it's, it says there were a total of 260 injury collisions in a nine-year, no, what is that? Yeah, I think it's about nine years, including 16 severe injuries. And unsafe speeding was a common factor. This is a pretty dangerous stretch, and a lot of these, if you look at where the dots are, a lot of these serious injuries and fatalities happened at intersections. Actually, most of them happened at intersections, and a lot of those were due to unsafe right turns. So this is a huge part of why we need to make this street safer, because it is a real problem. This is the other issue I want to talk about. I'm looking at all the housing that is currently approved and planned in our city along this corridor, and I marked them all, and it adds up to about 3,279 new homes that are already approved right now, and we're just starting on Arena, which will add approximately, you know, most, most homes in Cupertino have two cars, so that's a little over 6,500 homes. If we look at all the Santa Clara County cities, that's 260,000 more cars. So, so yes, it, traffic and mitigating traffic and reducing the number of cars by encouraging multimodal transportation is a key priority for us, unless we want to be like Atlanta where, you know, morning rush hour starts at 6:00 AM and ends at noon. I don't think we want that in our city. Okay. So then I looked at all of the letters that we got, and it was actually kind of interesting because clearly there's been some coordination, because they all said the exact same 10 points in the exact same order in different wording. So it made it easy for me because then I could respond to them more easily. So I went point by point. So the first one is, don't reduce the car lanes. There seems to be a misunderstanding here because there's no proposal to reduce car lanes along this corridor at all. I mean, I read the report end to end, there's no proposal to reduce car lanes, so I, I don't think that's an issue. Don't redesign the intersections. The Wolf-Stevens Creek intersection is already confusing. Go by, going back to the chart I just showed with all the fatalities and serious injuries, we do need to make our intersections safer because we value the people in our community, and we want to keep people safe, and it is a huge problem. So yes, we have to look out for the entire community. It's worth spending a couple more seconds taking a right turn or going through an intersection to save somebody's life. Don't prioritize VTA buses with special lanes or signal priority. Oh, I forgot, I need to do, I spoke to the project manager for this project, so I have to disclose that, and his name was...
Sorry if you might keep it brief, Commissioner.
Yeah, sorry.
Appreciate all the data-rich information.
Sean Daly, Assistant Vice President of Iteris, who is the consulting project manager. And so signal priority is we increase the light an extra 10 seconds or change the signal 10 seconds earlier or later. It actually makes transit go 20% faster and can make cars go faster. Don't reduce street parking. There is no street parking on Stevens Creek Boulevard in Cupertino, so that doesn't affect us at all. Let's see, there's actually, and I checked this with the, with the guy that I spoke to, but he actually said, and I quote, that there is enough width available throughout the entire length of Stevens Creek Boulevard, all the way to Derradon Station, to implement a complete street along the whole length of the corridor, the same number of car lanes, the same number of park. the same number of parking spaces, and protected by clays." We might have to narrow the lanes in a couple of places, but most of the way, you could keep everything exactly the same. Allowing red turns, yeah, again, we have to look out for the entire community. Next slide, and I'll be done. Focus on optimizing traffic lights. That's actually in the, in the, in the proposed study, so that should make everybody happy. Plant shade trees, that's already in the vision statement. Add benches, that's in the vision statement. Enhance crosswalk safety, that's also in the vision statement. Install blinking lights at all crosswalks that improve pedestrian visibility. So there's actually only two non-signalized crossings along this whole corridor, and they're both in West San Carlos, and they already have flashing lights. In Cupertino, there are no crosswalks that are not signalized. They're all at signalized intersections, which are, by the way, far safer for pedestrians and cyclists and drivers. So we're good on that as well. So I hope that addresses all of the concerns that were raised in the multiple letters that we received. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Linskog. Appreciate the data-rich presentation. I will remind you that on the west side, we do have one crossing that is not signalized by the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. But yes, overall, I, I agree that most of our crossings are signalized. So anyone else want to go next?
So I, I support the, the, the vision proposal in the form that it's in. I did want to attach some notes to it as considerations if there were going to be adjustments. But these would not be, these are not deal breakers for me. One of them was, Chad, thanks very much for the information about why the costs were high. I actually would recommend that the scope of Stevens Creek that's being studied be, you know, end at Deansa College and Westport. It's not to say that there, that it wouldn't be worthy to have improvements farther, but that's probably, it's a different, qualitatively different than, than the more central part. I think that, you know, I raised an issue about, about some of the estimates, the cost estimates. I think it is, this was, it's very clear that this was intended to be high-level, not to be a careful accounting. So, you know, I think that that would just be something, again, I would, I would say, if we were to make a modification, I would say, you know, perhaps, perhaps we would ask for further study on those, on the calculations, at least for the Cupertino portion, to understand what we think it is, but not a showstopper for me. Don't have an issue with the study costs that were sunk into this, that there, those are quite nominal, considering the value of what, of what's happening there. Not opposed at all to continuing the relationship. I think that's a good thing. I think there are a lot of positives here. I think that there were, I didn't see any conflicts with, with the things that we were trying to do in Cupertino. I think that's really important, because I think particularly, you know, some of the things about the usage in Santa Clara and things, there probably are conflicts there. But I didn't see any conflicts with the cons of objectives that we've been trying to put forth in Cupertino. So I think that that's a positive, and, and that the additional things that were being added were going to be a plus, a plus for the city in the long term. The final one for me, I think, you know, it's difficult. Commissioner Linskog had mentioned this, it's very difficult for bikes to pick an alternate path. Unfortunately, this is, again, this is just kind of an unfortunate design element of not only Cupertino, but of our neighboring cities as well, that there's not a better grid, which created an alternative, where you could make a choice, where you could intelligently kind of go in and say, okay, this will be, this will be the bike, the bike-friendly road, and this will be the car-friendly road. But one of the things I think that, so it is difficult, it is difficult in your bike to not go down Stevens Creek. It is difficult, I think, that if there's concern about losing the ability to right turn on red, I think that, that, I mean, there's actual real concern there. But people are pretty smart, and Google is pretty smart, and the bike, and it may be difficult for bikes to go on the other paths, on those other parallel paths that are not that close. But it's not that hard for cars to do that. Now, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean, you know, advocating that, you know, that, you know, that the car load should get pushed off to the other roads. I don't want to make it, you know, I don't want to make Prunridge impossible for you. Right. But I do think, but I do think that, that there is, there is a great value in, you know, the cars, cars will make the, will make the change if they need to. And, you know, I really hope that, 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 that people might consider that as something that would mitigate some of the impacts, some of the real impacts that I think that they would, they may see. Again, the, the benefits and, again, you know, looking at, looking at the number of cars that may come, you know, the, the future traffic projections, it really does say, you know, if there's a mechanism through which we can better utilize, better utilize the roads that we have. You know, that does mean, you know, better bus transit if we can do it, just to increase the, the usage, even if it's moderate, it's meaningful. And, and, you know, and to make it, make it safer for people, you know, in town, to get around town. There aren't, there are really not a lot of alternatives. So I, I think that those things are all together, those are in plus. So I, so the, the end result for me is that, you know, I, I will vote to support this. If, I think there are, there are a few places here identified where I think it could be better. And if there's a mechanism through which, you know, we can make that recommendation, then I'm happy to include that. But, but it's not a showstopper. So thank you very much. You know, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, the work and thinking.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Feng. I think Commissioner Scharf, if you want to go next?
I can go next, certainly.
So, yeah, I think the study's a good start, and I think with a few modifications, you know, I can support it. I would not support it as-is, as requested by one, one speaker. And I would point out that we're not just looking at Cupertino and acceptance, we, we're looking at the big picture, the whole plan for all three cities. So let's not just be Cupertino-centric, because we want people to be able to go the whole length of the corridor, not, and not just look at Cupertino. So some of the changes I would make to support it, I would restore the word grade-separated, restore the word grade instead of just separated into the recommendation. And there's a reason, if you put in non-grade-separated transit, it would greatly reduce the likelihood in the future of ever moving to a grade-separated system, which, you know, I think we all agree would be better, because it would be faster and less disruptive. I think we should encourage that the bicycle routes be on the adjacent, parallel, lower traffic routes that are already being used by cyclists. And I would point out, to contradict Commissioner Linskog and Commissioner Feng, it's exactly what other cities are doing and neighboring cities have done. Commissioner Linskog mentioned, oh, you must use Stevens Creek to get to Main Street, which of course, that's not quite accurate. I ride to Main Street all the time. I use Regnar Creek Trail, then through Creekside Park and Cala de Barcelona, and then I enter on Finch. I intentionally avoid Stevens Creek Boulevard, because it's so unpleasant to ride on. Also, to get to the Mary Avenue Bike Bridge, which I go to pretty often, I don't have to go on Stevens Creek. I even found a way to get to Voyager Coffee without riding on Stevens Creek. And, you know, we often go to Palo Alto, my wife and I, and Mountain View. And of course, we don't ride on El Camino or Central Expressway or Alma. We use the Palo Alto Bike Boulevard and the Mountain View Bike Boulevard. So, you know, cyclists know the, they know these routes, that they're not secret passageways. You know, they use them because they're safer and more pleasant. And I would also say, some of the items in the recommended plan will actually increase traffic congestion, are environmentally unfriendly, will reduce sustainability, increase air pollution, increase accidents and injuries and fatalities, and will have long-term negative effects. And those need to be fixed in the recommendation, even if it delays something six months, it's worth it. We've been working on this since we passed the resolution in 2019. It's now six years later. If it takes six months to get a better plan, I think it's well worth it. I think we also, as Tracy pointed out about transit and the financial issues, that we need to really be promoting some kind of expansion of the on-demand service and autonomous services when they become available on Stevens Creek Boulevard, which could actually reduce costs if we could reduce the frequency of the 523 and 23 during non-commute hours. And then finally, you know, we keep hearing, oh, look at these arenas, all this new housing is coming. But we can't even get the housing built in the, in our previous arena, and our population has decreased, Cupertino more than most cities, and the whole county has decreased, including San Jose. And the housing that has, the large housing that has been approved recently is not on the Stevens Creek corridor. It's more on the north side in Santa Clara and San Jose, where there is already more transit, including light rail. So I can support this with some modifications, I could not support it as it, as-is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scharf. I think we've been going for a while, so I'll begin my discussion by just saying, I think there are some areas of broad agreement. And before I even go there, I think the, what I heard from staff at the beginning was, you'd like to see some, some room for how we approach the study, and there will be checkpoints in the future where we can iterate and look at, you know, what our learnings are, what data we found, and then make certain decisions along the way. But, you know, you'd like to look at this starting out somewhat broadly and then work your way through the process. I also heard that grants may be a way to offset some of the costs that may come with it. Now, having said that, I want to acknowledge the areas of common interest that I heard, which is corridor maintenance, corridor identity. I think everybody agrees that we want to beautify the corridor, we want to have signage, we want to have, I think I heard, common agreement around street trees and making more investments in shade trees, medium plantings and all of that. So if I had to sort of look at where we all have some common agreement, even across the residents and the stakeholders, it is in making Stevens Creek a more beautiful place, a destination place. And so corridor identity and maintenance was one. The other one was around safety. There may be differences in how we view safety, but again, we want to give staff the latitude to really approach safety broadly and then have the conversations as we go along on safety. So I think safety was certainly an area. The other thing I want to point out is, we didn't spend as much time talking about the Via Hopper, but it is something unique that Cupertino innovated in, and so it certainly adds to the modes of transport. I mean, sometimes we talk about multimodal as walking, biking, transit and, and driving, and there is the Via Hopper, which is another twist to that, to that mix as well. So with, with all of that said, I think there's also a recreational aspect to the corridor. It's not just about getting from destination, from source to destination, but it is for people that enjoy what they can do in the corridor. And we do have a unique corridor, because just south of us is the Stevens Creek Trail. On the east side is the upcoming Lawrence Smithy Trail, as Matt pointed out. On the north side, hopefully, there's the Tamey Nenu Trail. So we want to have the latitude to operate a little more broadly, and it sounds like you were talking about a half-mile north and a half-mile south. So to make this more encompassing, we'd like to maybe think about this in the context of what can the corridor accommodate for off-corridor investments, for the network for walking and bike use. So with all that said, maybe I'd like to see if I can craft a motion here to get us moving towards a vote. I'd like to propose a motion that we accept the report. We, I'm sorry, David, will you help us with taking notes as I try to craft this motion? I'd like to propose that we accept this report and reaffirm the recommendations from the Bike-Pet Commission, including not eliminating lanes, which I believe is one of the recommendations of Bike-Pet, to re-endorse that again. And prioritizing investments in corridor identity and maintenance. Prioritizing investments in safety, with a focus on innovations around safety. I heard mentioned about being able to look at what sensors we can use to improve crossings and things like that. So I think prioritizing safety in general, looking forward with a focus on innovations. And then being able to prioritize cost by limiting the focus till Westport, I believe, which is a reasonable ROI. The motion was to focus on the corridor till some point, such as Westport or maybe Mary Avenue. We can adjust that as we go. Let's craft the motion first. And, and to focus on cost again, to limit this to one area of investment in transit, and based on the resolution, that was grade-separated transit.
Excuse me, Chair, would, would you be open to just slightly changing your motion to, not that, not that you move to accept the report, but you move to recommend the council accept the report with, with your additions?
Yes, thank you, Attorney Wu. The small tweak there was, we recommend to council that they accept the report with the following areas to consider prioritizing.
So I'm good with all of that, except I wasn't quite sure where the Westport thing came from. Can you clarify that?
That was Commissioner Feng with a focus on cost and character.
Yeah, I think when asked, when I asked the question about costs, one of the things that happened was that Cupertino had a long section, because the analysis went all the way to Lehigh. So the section from Lehigh to, to Westport would, is a different character than, than the main corridor.
So, and I don't want to get into the discussion, I want to make sure staff can write up this motion and we can look at it, and then I'd like to seek a second. I'm trying to get broad areas of agreement, so let's get the easy parts in there. Corridor identity and maintenance, safety, and a focus on cost through smart choices, and a focus on off-corridor investments around trails that are to the north and south. So if we may pause there and maybe either project the motion, or read it back, ideally if you can project. And if I can seek a second.
Now, we're just seeing your screensaver for some reason.
Okay. I advertised my daughter's picture.
If you modify your display settings.
Is it easier to send it to Matt? Looks like he could share.
I'm not sure.
Job for the young folks.
Or, or maybe Matt can project.
I don't think they're using Max.
It's there. Where's the cursor? Oh.
It's on the screen.
I can't see it. Oh, it's on the screen. All right, hold on.
So there we go. Let's try this.
Okay, very good.
No. I can't see. Now you're looking up there.
All right.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we have a motion to recommend the council accept the corridor vision study, reaffirm the BPC qualifications with the following additional qualifications, which is prioritize investments in identity and maintenance, safety, cost. I'd like to further caveat the safety with a focus on investments in technology innovation, if you can add that in place.
To the fourth bullet?
I think there were some things around pedestrian sensing and...
Second bullet.
Oh, in the second.
Investments in safety with a focus on technology innovation. And if we can throw in a few samples, pedestrian sensing, maybe adaptive signals, if we can add a few examples, including but not limited to, just to throw in a few examples. And maybe autonomous cars, who knows?
So can I say one thing?
Sure. You're trying to modify this thing? Can we just, are you trying to clarify the motion? Because I want to get a second.
Clarify, oh, okay. Yeah, I, I am trying to clarify it.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I'm trying to change something, so I will not.
Okay.
But yeah.
Let me, let me ask, there's a section here where we were reaffirming the BPC qualifications. Those were not in conflict with this.
They were not. We were just...
They were not, okay. If that's the case, then I'll second this. I, I did... I, I didn't, I actually said before that I'd be happy to accept this in the normal form, but I think this is close enough that I, I would second this.
And, and so if, if we may just make sure we've got a motion and a second at the moment, if there's any comments on the motion, if we can open it up.
So, I have, I have a couple, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
The only comment I have is that I think the scope should end at Bub, not at Westport. Because Bub is a major corridor. We have a lot of Apple people riding their bikes over to all those buildings on Bub Road.
No, this was the west side, so not the east side.
No, the scope should end at Deansa or Westport. I'm saying it should end at Bub, not, not...
Yeah, I think that makes...
And also 85 is a particularly dangerous intersection for pedestrians and bikes. You've got the high-speed entry onto 85 northbound. So that, that's the only thing I would change there.
Yeah, I would accept that change to, I think that's a minor change to extend from Westport to Bub. I also didn't see the inclusion of the off-corridor investments in the bike and ped network. Could we add that, please? There was another bullet I listed, which is invest in the bike and ped network, such as Tamianeno Trail, Lawrence Smithy Trail, and the Bike Boulevard as well. Let's throw that in.
So, after Bub Road, there are a lot of students that ride on that stretch of Stevens Creek Boulevard. So I do think we should stay with, looking at the report, the scope goes all the way to Foothill. And we know, I mean, a lot of students ride that stretch. So I, I do think we should keep it to, to the corridor all the way to Foothill Boulevard. That is very heavily used by students. I, I think that would send a very bad message that we don't care about our students. And the prioritized investment in safety, I'm a little concerned about being exclusionary. I think we should leave it up to the staff to, to come up with what they, I mean, we can say if focus, I mean, you know, be creative in terms of, you know, use of technology and innovation, but I don't know that I would say with a focus on that because that seems exclusionary to other potential solutions to increase safety.
Thank you, Commissioner Linskog. And it was not meant to be. It was intended to give them some broad latitude. So maybe we can add in with the focus on but not limited to. Can you add a phrase with the focus on but not limited to? On the second bullet, prioritize investments in safety with a focus on but not limited to technology and innovation, if that's sufficient to... And I, I think the spirit of it was to give you room to innovate and come back with suggestions on safety and then we can look at it. So I believe we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment, otherwise we can't...
Well, would you consider amending from Bub Road to Foothill?
I, I actually think, if you think about the whole of the things that this, that the vision includes, then you ask, you kind of ask the question, do you, so I, I completely understand what you're talking about from a bike standpoint. But would you want to extend above, above grade rail? You know, above grade mass transit to Foothill?
Yeah, maybe.
But, but that's not what we're saying. We're saying the corridor, we're not saying transit will go up to Foothill. We're just saying we're going to look at the corridor as a whole irrespective. Transit is a separate topic, right? Where transit goes and where it starts and where it ends is a separate conversation. But in terms of, you know, safety improvements, intersection improvements, you know, crosswalk improvements, we should be looking all the way to Foothill.
There's nothing that, there's nothing that stops Cupertino from doing that independently of, of it being included as part of the, the corridor study.
Yeah, I, I think the spirit of the comment is not to be exclusionary, but to also apply a cost focus such that we have other projects that allow for that. For example, the Stevens Creek Boulevard buffered bike lane phase three gets us there, independent of this anyway. So, I think there's a bit of that. So, I, I'm, I'm okay keeping the motion as is. And I think we have the spirit of the comment that is actually met through other projects as well. I think the primary part of the comment was not to spend time looking at taking a transit out into the Lehigh quarry or...
So, is the main concern that we don't want transit to go up to Lehigh or, so, can we just then mention that? Then just say, you know, we don't, we limit the consideration of transit to go no further than Bub, but keep the corridor the same length all the way to Foothill?
I think the, the character of, the character of Stevens Creek is you go past Bub.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I think even by the time you got to Bub. But very true about the 85 intersection, although that one, boy, you know, that's going to actually be something that's not here, which is an overpass, right?
Well, it's the same, it's the same at Lawrence and Stevens Creek. It's a terrible, but I would also point out, I, I'm not sure what students are riding there because if you're riding to Montevista or to Kennedy, you would ride through the neighborhood near Blackberry Farm, and we even put in that bike bridge, what is it called? Scenic specifically for that. And you don't ever have to go on, onto Stevens Creek to get to, to those schools. But I guess if you're riding to Deansa, that, that would be the case. But I would suspect that most parents would prefer their kids ride on the local streets.
Well, yeah, so I, I do want to, before we go too far, my motion included the examples for the off-corridor networks to be Lawrence Smithy Trail and Tamianeno Trail, if you can please include that. That was part of the, such as but not limited to, again, not trying to be...
Yeah, no, that's fair. If I can just go back for a second, that map that I had shown of the Stevens Creek Boulevard fatalities and serious injuries, a huge cluster of that is at Stevens Creek and Foothill. So, I, I feel like if we're worried about transit, let's call that out as a separate bullet point and, and keep the corridor itself all the way to Foothill, if you guys are amenable to that.
Is there a way that we might phrase this? I, I sense that it is a bit of the character part of it as well. And so I want to appreciate and respect that. So I think, I, I feel like we have a motion that's not necessarily perfect, but I think we've got the spirit of what we would like to accomplish in there. So with that, I'd like to try and move for a vote. I think we have a motion and a second. And it's not going to be perfect, but let's, let's see if we can get this to a vote.
Michael's trying to say something.
So, I think Chair, your current motion is that you accepted Chair, Commissioner Scharf's friendly amendment to extend the corridor to Bub Road. But I think the secondary needs to agree to that as well. The secondary is Commissioner Feng.
I don't, I don't think it was an amendment to the motion as much as I was still crafting my motion. And so that was a suggestion to make a minor tweak to my motion. So, but yes, I mean, if you want to...
Well, as long as staff is clear on the motion, because the original motion I understood was up to Westport.
Yeah.
And then, and then that was seconded by Commissioner Feng. And then, and then separately, I think Commissioner Scharf suggested, let's move it to Bub. And that, the secondary hasn't...
I believe you said that.
If, if this is an issue with me seconding again, then I would, I would accept that as well.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So let us vote, if we may. Are we voting by lights or...
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. I want to thank staff for their patience and promise not to keep it to 11. And I think we overachieved on that front. I know our planning staff would like to be wrapping this up as well. So with that, I think we conclude Agenda Item Three. Thank you for our visiting planning staff. Don't be transportation planning staff, if I should call you that, transportation planners. Don't be strangers. Hope to see you on our next set of meetings. And with that, we move to staff and commission reports. Are there any staff reports?
No, sir, there aren't any.
Any commission reports? Okay, if none, we move to future agenda setting. Any future agenda items?
Can we talk about when the, when, how, when we will see the objective design standards again?
I believe there was some talk about fall, but again, this section is...
This section is for new, it's not necessarily for what was on the agenda. You know, as soon as we are able to have something ready, we will bring it back for the commissions. And as Luke mentioned, we also need to look at our budget to see what we can and cannot do.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, very good. So if no future agenda items, I believe we are done. Okay, sorry.
So, so yeah, if it's possible to come back at, once, at an early draft, I think that would really be...
If, if we can be accommodated with the budget that we have, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.